On the computer itself. All right, I'd like to call to order the August 17, 2021, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you kindly call the roll.
Stephen Mans.
Present.
Peter Plithko.
Present.
Deborah Rang. Andrea Perdello.
Present.
John Hicksonbaugh.
Here.
Kathleen Ward.
Present.
Carla Bryant.
Here.
Next order of business is approval of the July 20, 2021 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any changes or corrections? And if not, may I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And in opposition, it passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is a report of the planning staff.
Good afternoon, evening, as you say, Chair and Planning Board, this is an update. Since the last Planning Board meeting, these items were approved by City Commission on July 26, 2021, by five zero approval, and you heard these items on May 18, 2021, and you approved it five zero. This was a major amendment for Rosemary Square, which was to allow increase in height from 15 to 25 stories. And this is basically the public block that you approved, and the modified affordable workforce housing provisions in that area, and to do some minor architectural changes. This was to allow a veterinarian clinic in certain areas, and mainly was Climatis Waterfront District and Dixie Highway area. You actually approved this also. And this is site. These items were approved, just heard by the commission, on August 9. And there were two items. One was approved at the March 16 Planning Board meeting by four to zero vote, and one was approved at the June 15 meeting by five to zero vote. And I'm going to let Rick Green come in now and talk about the two items, because they were the ones he worked on.
Good evening, Rick Green, Development Services Director. The first was an amendment to the comprehensive plan that involved some minor changes that we were doing to promote a workforce housing initiative. This particular change did include a reduction of the Banyon Street garage from a height of 12 stories to eight stories. And the bigger change was one that we did present to this board, and we're excited. We've been working with staff, Anna Ponte did a lot of the work with me on this project. But what we did is we offered an incentive to developers in the downtown area. If, if they provided workforce housing as part of a project in the downtown, we would increase the height and development available for that developer. We presented this to you at a 27% increase after meeting with developers. We did reduce that number to 20%. So basically, if we allow a building to go from 10 to 15 stories, that additional five stories in height has to have a set aside of 20% for workforce housing. That workforce housing must be specified as required, and number three, 25% addressing the workforce housing need between 60% of area median income, which is about $80,000 per year, 25% at 80%, and then 50% at 100%. What was unique is that we required that these workforce units be, remain workforce for a period of 20 years. We would assist the developer in providing a tax increment refund for the first 10 years of that 20 years to help bridge that gap between the market rate and what they could charge with the area median income. And that was $16,000 a year for a studio, $12,000 for a one-bedroom unit, and $8,000 for a two-bedroom unit. So that was passed unanimously by the City Commission. We had met with developers prior to first reading, and then actually in between first and second reading. And there seemed to be consensus that this is something that they would be excited to do. So we're very pleased that that got approved, and hopefully that will result in more workforce housing downtown.
Okay, and then, and the last case was the Hewlett Place on Okeechobee Boulevard, was approval for $22,000 approximately square for the office, and about 2,500 square feet of warehouse and service bay addition that the Commission and Planning Board approved. That concludes staff presentation.
Any questions of staff? Thank you, Angela. Next on our agenda are remarks by the chairperson. It is with pleasure that I announce we have a full complement for the Planning Board with the addition of new board member Henry Smoeller and new alternate Carla Bryant. Mr. Smoeller is general counsel for the PGA. He's not able to attend tonight's meeting, so I will delay his introduction until our September meeting. Carla Bryant is here, however, and I take my honor here to introduce her to you now. And Ms. Bryant is the Development Director at Drama Works. She received her Bachelor of Arts in Merchandising from Florida State University, and Master's in Organization Development from Palm Beach Atlantic University. Ms. Bryant has held leadership over volunteer positions in many community organizations, including the Burt Reynolds Institute for Theater Training, Call Ball Theater, Palm Beach County Tourist Development Board, Palm Beach County Health Facilities Authority, Lois Pope Theater, Girl Scouts of the USA, Watershed Committee of City West Palm Beach, and the Palm Beach County Film and Television Commission. As the alternate, Ms. Bryant will be participating fully in all of our proceedings and all board discussions. Whereas here, a board member's absent, she will also vote. So we welcome you to our board.
Thank you so much.
Next on our agenda is the Declaration of Ex parte Communications. And let me begin by disclosing I spoke with the applicants on Planning Board cases 1060 MN, 1060 NN, and 950, followed by five Z's. None of these communications will prevent me from deciding these cases solely based upon the evidence presented this evening. Does anyone else have anything to disclose? And let me start on this side. John?
Yes, I want to disclose that I was contacted by email regarding discussion for Planning Board case number 950 with five Z's. I declined that invitation. I also had a contact with the representative on Planning Board case 1060 MM, which is number C3 on the agenda, and I did speak with that representative on the telephone. That conversation will not influence my decision this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre.
Yes, I did have ex parte communication with the applicant to discuss Planning Case Board number 950ZZZZZ. The conversation will have no bearing on my decision tonight.
Thank you, Peter.
I also had conversations regarding three cases, 950, five Z's, 1060 MM, and 1060 NN. My deliberations will be based on the information presented tonight.
Thank you, Deborah.
Okay, I did receive an email regarding the BJ's development. However, I did not have time to respond. Therefore, my decision will be based on the evidence presented this evening.
Thank you, Kat.
Yes, I did have communications with applicant under 950, five Z's. My decision will be based on the evidence presented, and I did communicate with the applicant for BJ's, the 1060 MM, but we weren't able to connect.
Okay, thank you, Carla.
Fortunately, no one knows that I exist at this time. So I have no communications to report.
That will change. That then brings us to Planning Board case number 95ZZZZZ. And the swearing in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening on any case, please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful? Thank you, you may be seated. So we will hear from the applicant first? Anna Maria, or do you wish to begin?
Yes, no. We're going to have the applicant first. Mr. Chair, this is a request by Brian Seymour of Gunster Loan behalf of Cohen Brothers Realty Corporation of Florida LLC for the approval of a Level 3 site plan review within the City Place Development of Regional Impact. The applicant is also requesting 20 waivers from the regulations that apply to this code. So the applicant will do their presentation, and then after that, staff will do its presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Ms. Bryant, you're no longer going to be left alone. Welcome. For the record, my name is Brian Seymour with the Gunster Law Firm. On behalf of the applicant, Cohen Brothers Realty Corporation of Florida, I have been sworn in. With me tonight is Josh Long, who is a planner with our firm, who you're going to hear more from tonight as well. We have other members of our team who are here. There are some that are not, because they're from out of town. And frankly, with the uptick in COVID, I told them all to stay home. To put a fine point on that, one of them texted me earlier today that they are recovering, in fact, from COVID. So I think while this is an important project, and we are all connected, because we all have the technology, they are watching tonight, discretion being the better part of valor, and safety first, that's the approach I decided we would take tonight. So this project isn't just any project. It's really about bringing something special to the city of West Palm Beach. We understand there's some subjective view on things, and we're going to walk you through a lot of that tonight. But this is about the tent site finally getting developed after decades of stop-starts and people not being able to perform. Last year, the CRA approved the lease for the site, which is owned by the City of West Palm Beach Community Development Agency, has certain restrictions in it, certain requirements in it, and then ultimately, the first of which actually was that we had to present to them a concept plan for the site. The concept plan was approved last, end of last summer. We then put the detailed plans together that you're going to see here tonight. Detailed engineering, detailed architecture, landscaping, et cetera. But everything you see tonight is consistent with that concept. The tower itself, the structure, the integrated public art that we're going to spend a lot of time talking about tonight. All of that is consistent with that concept plan, and has to be consistent with that plan as we move forward. So I want to start with who we are as a team, because this is a group of designers that I'm proud to stand up here and represent tonight. The first is Charles Cohen, the developer himself, and Cohen Brothers is really the visionary of all of this. He brings something special to the city, a project that is not just about more of what we have, but trying to create something unique, something different, that can change the nature of how we move forward in the city. The design architect is Pelli Clark Pelli Architects, who was working with the Architect of Record, executive architects Nichols, Brosch, Wurstwolf, and Associates. Another important element of the design team that we're going to talk about tonight, you see that right in the middle, under PCPA, is Felice Verini. And he may have his name mispronounced by me or by Josh at some point tonight, but I believe that's how it's pronounced, who is a Swiss architect that I'll talk about in a minute. The reason, by the way, I put Pelli Clark Pelli Architects and Felice's names right there together is because what you're going to see is that they are a team in specific relative to how the art gets integrated into the parking structure, which I know is an issue we're going to want to spend some time on. Of course, we also have local folks with us as well. Schmidt Nichols, our landscape architect, Langen, who was a civil engineer in Simmons and White, who handled the traffic. And of course, Josh, who does his best to try to keep me in line. PCPA was actually, so you all understand, required in the lease. That designer, the lead architect, is a requirement of the CRA. So Kristin Hawkins, who I'm going to talk about in a moment, has been the lead architect on this. I'm going to start, though, if I can do this right, with Charles Cohen. Charles is not a developer who just allows other folks to move his design and tell him what things should look like, but someone who's intimately involved in every detail to craft a vision of what he sees for a unique opportunity. He doesn't just build a building, but he tries to work something that is unique and special. And he wants to add something to the area. He's passionate about a creation of iconic buildings that work for the market, and his office buildings are very high-end, one of the highest quality of tenants want to be. He knows this market and what it's going to work. Then he puts his time and his money to make that happen. And let me tell you, he is very, very deeply involved in these discussions, in these designs, and it is very important to him. He's in this for the long term, to make this a signature project that works for the city for a very long time. What you can see here are some varied examples of the vision that he can bring. Each a unique building, varied concepts and design that fit with the community thinking about everything that's around it. And in creating those iconic projects, he doesn't do it alone. He brings the best in the business. And in this case, that starts with Pelli Clark Pelli Architects. The first of the folks who were brought on for this project from concept early, early on, before I was engaged here as well. And PCPA is a world-renowned architecture firm, initially founded in 1977. The design that you're going to see is something that they worked very hard, as our team did, to put together for our city. The lead architect is Kristin Hawkins. She's been with the firm since 1985, personally having led iconic projects around the world, including things like the Natural History Museum in China, and the Red Building of the Pacific Design Center with Charles Cohen himself, which is an award-winning building. And that's just some. Their work is about placing great buildings in open public spaces in harmony with the existing built environment. And you can see some of the example of their work here. They consider the site, the surrounding area, the visual impacts. All of this is part of their process, thinking about things. They all consider environmental impact, how they can make something work as best as possible, given the circumstances. And obviously, they're bound by certain regulatory requirements as well. And I'm going to talk a little bit about some of that. Nichols, Brosch, Wurst, and Wolf, the executive architect, has worked hand-in-hand with Kristin, Bruce Brosch, and his team, working with Kristin to put the details together on the design. Bruce has been designing buildings here in Florida beyond since 1979. And you're going to see, be familiar with some of his work. You'll see the Parkline Apartments and the Hilton that's right across the street from the site. Well, not right across the street, but just down the street from the site here tonight, that he was involved in as well. And of course, I would be remiss if I didn't mention our favorite local. Well, my favorite local is Josh, sorry, John, no offense. Schmidt Nichols Planning and Landscape Architecture is the landscape architect and planner here. I don't think that any of you necessarily need an introduction to John Schmidt. He has been in this community for decades, doing tremendous work, creating spaces and landscape that really work within the context of building and community. And we're very happy that he was part of this. The last person I want to talk about is Felice Verini. And you're not used to seeing artists talked about in your presentations at the Planning Board, because you don't get there. Because typically, the art is an after-the-fact discussion point. It's had with the AIPP when you go for your building permit. In fact, if I could have, I would have actually had an AIPP review, full review now, if the code would have allowed me, but you can't actually file it. But we did take this art that I'm going to show you tonight to the Art Life Committee, who received it very favorably. Mr. Verini is very special. And his vision and his integration into this and into the parking structure is a critical element of the design that we have here. Mr. Verini is a world-renowned Swiss architect who creates some of the most unique, interactive art in the world. It's about architectural space, and the designs that you're going to see with the parking structure, architecture, take that into account. And I'm going to show you them. I know that I went through the staff report. You can see a couple of images with the artwork on it. But it's about utilizing the different surfaces painting on over and into the structure to create his art. Three-dimensional paintings are created utilizing two-dimensional spaces. And for Mr. Verini, each space is unique. He focuses on the various vantage points, as you're going to see in a bit, and looks for how to create art that moves with the viewer and interacts and engages the viewer as they move around. Here are some examples of what he's done in other areas. As you can see, each top image is that three-dimensional art piece that you can see, and then different angles below it, so that you can actually see how it changes and moves and integrates into the architecture itself. So with that, let's talk a little bit about where we're talking about. This is not in the sort of core of the downtown. This is the entryway to the downtown. The site is bounded by Quadril on the west, which is a four-lane divided road. On the east, by Dixie, another four-lane road undivided. And to the west of Quadril, of course, is the FEC, or the, let me get it right, yes, the FEC tracks. I would hate for them to think that I got that wrong, which leads to the Bright Line Station, which you can see isn't too far away. And one of the things that Josh is going to talk about a little bit later, and certainly we can talk a little bit more about, is the connection utilizing mobility improvements and mobility opportunities for the site. Okeechobee, which is a four-lane, one-way road, is on the south. And Lakeview, another four-lane, one-way road on the north. And so this is bound by a couple of major, well, by four major roadways, which obviously impacts the design and the concepts that we were looking at as well. The Okeechobee Business District is the applicable zoning district. It was designed for basically the edge of this prop, well, a little past this property, all the way to the water. I know that Related has their approval from DAC. This is coming to you because it's in the City Place DRI as well. We are bound by a couple of things within the OBD. Importantly and critically, because it tremendously impacted our design options, is the comprehensive plan limits us to 308 feet in height. And we utilized that as best we could, but because of that height, we had to do things a little bit differently. In fact, the first design we looked at was going to be about 38 stories, but because of that comprehensive plan cap, we can't get around that. You can't waive a comprehensive plan, so we are limited to that. And that was something, along with the boundaries of the site itself, and there's a five-foot grade change that impacts some of the design options that we could have. So what we did, though, is look to the vision, and the team worked really hard. And I want to give Anna Maria and Rick a lot of credit. They spent a lot of time with us. Obviously, we didn't come to agreement on every single thing, as you saw in your staff report, but we worked hard together to accomplish things. We moved things, we changed things, we dealt with traffic and parking, we dealt with design elements. And what you have tonight is that final product. We know this is a critical site for the city. We know that for decades, people have looked at this site. They couldn't make it work, they wouldn't make it work, they oversold. And what you're going to see is how Mr. Cohen is going to actually bring the tent site to life with a Class A-plus office building to meet the demands of the highest caliber of tenants. It's going to feature a grand lobby for the ground floor, has retail along the ground plane on all four sides, engaging the streets using clear glass. It's got gathering spaces, both public and private open spaces, that you'll see tonight. Something that's unique but in harmony with what is there. Not just more of the same, but trying to bring something different to the city that still works. We're going to connect to Rosemary Square. We're going to provide new space along Dixie to activate that portion of Dixie, creating a pedestrian-friendly site. And we've looked at traffic demand management and mobility, and incorporated those, and a lot of those, into the site to deal with what we can from the traffic perspective. And again, the special and unique integrated public art element that's incorporated into and is part of the parking structure. So I'm going to spend some time talking about that structure and the artwork, because obviously, it is the thing that we couldn't come to a final agreement with staff on. Josh is going to go through a lot of other things as well. But the, the art itself and the way it works within the structure is a critical part of considering the structure as it goes, and the reason why we need the waivers that we do. So again, the Art Life Committee looked at this, they looked upon it favorably, they were very excited about it. I don't think this is a question of whether anybody agrees or disagrees with the artwork. It's about how we can make it work, and that's where we're having the disagreement or the issue, if you will, tonight. And what you see, by the way, top and bottom, is the, the structure with some of the art. And the reason I use these pictures is on the bottom particularly, you see the light. So the art doesn't go down at night. It doesn't go away. It's always part of the experience for the public, day or night. And so it's going to be lit, and it doesn't stop at any time of the day. So it's an important element, and it gets incorporated into that. So the artwork isn't designed in a vacuum. But, and here you can see how some of the art will work. So this is a rendered position, where you can see on the left the 3D element. And then as you walk to another location, which is the exact same corner of that structure, you can see how the slabs change, the alternating slabs, the structural elements, and the paint create the imagery and allow for things to exist as a three-dimensional piece, and then work with you as you move around and engage you differently as you work in and around the site. Again, not designed in the vacuum. Sorry, I won't, okay, so yeah, I do want to talk about this. I thought I went one too far, but here we actually have the structural design, a little cut sheet of what will happen. And here you can see some of those alternating slabs. It's designed with the vehicle set back, the slab turns upward. It's part of the artistic canvas that way, without being so massive that it undercuts the airy view, and it doesn't take away the ability for the artist to utilize everything. So we chose that, and Kristin specifically designed that in contemplation of the art. It does other things as well, and there's some, there's some environmental benefits that come with this type of parking structure. It provides for shade, not only to the Paseo, which you're going to hear about because of where it is and how it's set, but it also provides for shade along the various elements to both the street and to the other slabs itself, so that sun doesn't beat down upon it and come off of it, reducing heat island effect, limiting solar heat gain, avoiding radiant heat gain, again, taking the mass of the structure off. And it also allows for air to flow through, which means I don't need to have so many massive pieces of equipment, cooling the garage or the parking structure, or ventilating it, which then obviously reduces the greenhouse gases that are going to come off of this. And so in addition to the design itself and utilizing it for the artistic element, and keeping it open and area light, which was a critical element of what we're trying to do here, because yes, you can see some of the cars sometimes, that it really provides a lot of other benefits as well. So. There's the blue. So here, what you're seeing is the other elements of the art. On one side, we showed you the yellow and the red. So here, this is on one corner, which is on the, it is on, that is that corner that you're seeing there, and that wraps around is the south side and the west side of the structure. Here, on the catty corner, on the north and the east, you can see the alternative, the other piece. There are two pieces that Verini is incorporating into this that are also the public art. And here on the left, again, you see that three-dimensional wrapping effect on the parking structure drawing your eye. And so again, here, you can see some of the cars that may be there, but your eye is drawn, not to the vehicle, your eye is drawn to the art, and the art moves with you as you come to it, and you get closer. You no longer see the vehicles, you see the art. You can see how it's painted into the slabs, into the various elements of it. So changing one changes or defeats the other. And it's a critical element that we have here to keep this art, we need to keep what we have. So Mr. Cohen, Mr. Verini, and PCPA have looked at this as one piece. The art and the architecture are combined together. And this will allow us to keep not only the second in the entire United States Verini piece here in the city of West Palm Beach. It'll be the first in Florida, only the second in the United States. World-renowned artist, this is our opportunity to set the stage for the highest quality of art. So with that, this is the other side, where it's the, the red. You can see again, as you enter the Paseo, you can see the art, you can move with it. It engages you as you walk, various different pieces. It's the same art piece, just viewed from different angles, so that you can see why it's so critical that it becomes part of the structure, and why, if we change the structure, we lose the art. And it's, it's the reason that we couldn't agree when we went through the process of design and discussion with city staff. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Josh to walk through some of the more technical details. I appreciate your time. We will be here, and I'm sure my phone is buzzing with texts, so if there are questions, we're ready to go. And I'm going to put my mask on before I move. Okay.
Good evening. For the record, Josh Long, ASAP certified planner with the Gunster Law Firm. Thank you for the introduction, Brian, and for being the best planner in the city. Sorry, John. Anyway, what I'm going to go through are some of the aspects of the actual tower and the site plan itself, and some of the other elements that get into the actual planning components of this project. This view that you see here is really to show the building in context of what's approved around it. To the east is City Place, and to the north is what is approved for Opera Place. The tower itself is an elliptical-shaped building that sits on the western portion of the site, providing approximately 430,000 square feet of Class A office space. The front of the building is framed by royal palms and oak trees. The entry is a clear glass, 30-foot-high grand lobby that creates a visual connection from the main entrance on Quadril through the building to the Paseo, which I'll talk about in a little bit. through the building to the Paseo, which I'll talk about in a little bit. In the front lobby, excuse me, that was wrong. In the, in the front lobby is a drop-off area designated for ride-share opportunities. We recognize the emerging planning trends for transportation, and we've set aside and received special approval from FDOT, it's an FDOT road there, that we can have a designated area for ride-share opportunities. It'll be restricted, no parking, only ride-share opportunities. So in this particular slide, shows the architect features of the tower. As I mentioned, the Opera Place behind it, City Plaza Buildings to the east. In regards to the tower's architecture, the elliptical form was chosen by Pellicar Pelli, both for its iconic power and unobtrused character. The tower has been designed to be light in form, material, and color. Pure elliptical form delineated by faceted overlapping segments, which are known as petals. This three-dimensional articulation adds scale and definition to the form. Petals are marked by projecting vertical fins extending the facade from the ground to the top to accentuate verticality. The form is further shaped by sculptured notches on the east and west facades, marking the main entrances on Quadrille and the Paseo. The tower tapers gently, drawing one's eye upward and shaping the top. And full disclosure, those are from Kristin. I'm not nearly that smart to know any of those words. But yes, that comes from our architect, trying to describe, as Brian said, she didn't come because of COVID protocols. But those were some of her expressions on how she came to design this building, which I think is done very well there. But as you can see, it does fit very well with its surroundings. Now I'm going to go on to the actual site plan. So this is the site plan, as you can see, right here in green. Now, this is one of the unique aspects of this particular site. And I'll get into the real uniqueness of the site in context of downtown West Palm Beach in just a second. But as you can see, we have substantial ground floor retail throughout the entire project. In fact, the retail on the, in the office tower itself, the size of those spaces is 5175 square feet on both sides. You also, for the office building, have the grand lobby. So all the way around the office building is active use, retail, extensive lobby. Just, it is a very unique aspect of this particular site. And for the parking structure itself, we also have large retail areas. Those are very large over there. Those are 5,700, 4,900, 4,500 square feet spaces respectively. So when you're drawn to this particular block, when you're at the ground level, and we paid a lot of attention to the pedestrian and experience at the ground level, when you are walking through this project at the ground level, it is going to be an exceptional place, a place where you're going to feel welcome and you're going to feel comfortable. There's going to be landscaping throughout, seating areas, ground floor retail with different kinds of, you know, shops, just a very inviting space. This entire area in purple is what we're calling our front yard. This is the area where you could walk around and do just a myriad of different activities, whether it's a meeting with somebody that's in the office building, whether it's meeting with somebody having coffee at one of the retails or meeting with somebody to do some shopping in one of the retails. This area is unique in its aspect. And I actually went through and I looked at all the different blocks in the city and all the different developments. I don't think this kind of configuration for an office building exists. You have no back-of-house here. You walk around the entire building, it's all front yard. It's all your living room. It's very special. It's unique to this city, and it's why we separated the office tower from the parking structure. So here's the landscape plan, a lot of detail here. But I just wanted to show you this, to show the different areas that are in our living room and in the front yard of this project and how you can walk around and experience the shade from the grand royal palms to the oak trees to other flowering trees, various shrubs of different heights, all kinds of visual stimulus and interaction going on throughout the landscape plan. Now getting into the Paseo. So the Paseo is a very special area. It's situated between the parking structure and the office building. And it's been designed to be multifunctional, an area that can be adjusted for events or for different retailers. So we plan on having movable furniture and tables and other things to accommodate the particular needs of the Paseo. But this area also, because of its location between these structures, will be shaded. There will be light breezes going through there, and that'll help with the South Florida heat and make it a very enjoyable area. There's some images, what I'll show later, that really demonstrate this. And this is kind of what we're talking about. This is a grand space, a very special space, a space that's going to put West Palm Beach on the map when people come and visit. They're going to remember the Paseo. They're going to remember how it felt and the interactions they had. A very important place. Now, I want to get into the Palm Court. So the Palm Court is a private open space. That's on top of the parking structure for the use of those tenants and their guests. This, again, is a multifunctional space that's intended to be able to be used. You can have different variations. You have a reflecting pond, there's landscaping and trees, shade trees and palms up there. There's a small little café. So it's a great relief for people on the office building all day to go out, maybe have a coffee or a soda, a small snack, enjoy the South Florida weather that we're so lucky to have. So this is a real special place on top of the parking structure for the tenants of the building. So Brian hit on this quickly, but it's very important to go over what we are providing for mobility and traffic mitigation. Now, the city has a TDM ordinance associated with the Okeechobee Business District, and we are participating in almost all of the different options available. So our office building is participating almost to the max in providing the city with just a huge variation of different mobility options. I won't read the entire list. I believe you've probably seen this already. But you know, some of the key things in here is an annual reoccurring contribution to the city's trolley system of $273,000 a year. That's just one of the many benefits that this office tower is going to bring to the city. And you can imagine how the funds for the trolley is going to help transit throughout the city and interaction. As Brian also mentioned, you know, the train station right down the road. So there's all kinds of tying and mobility and traffic mitigation with this particular project. So when we get into access for the parking garage on the ground floor, what you see here is, I don't know if you can see my little cursor or not, but we actually have interest, an ingress and egress on both sides. And this is to eliminate potential traffic congestion so people can get in and out of the project on both sides. The service entrance is just on the ground floor. It comes straight in off Okeechobee. It is one-way, and it goes out on Lakeview with the little bays for the unloading and loading. What's interesting about this particular setup is the service bays, actually, all those deliveries go under the Paseo, underground. So you're not going to have the commercial aspect going through the Paseo. It all occurs under the Paseo to keep the Paseo a special public place, a public open space. So here is the access and the parking for Level 1. And this is primarily ramps, and I'm showing you that. So we can then get to Level 2. And just a quick tweak to Anna Maria's staff report. I believe she mentioned that the valet was on Level 3. It is the third floor of the parking garage, but it's the second parking level. So just a little nuance there. But this is actually the second parking level of the structure. And this is where the valet is located. Once again, remembering the importance of creating a great pedestrian environment and, you know, circulation around the site. We've taken all the valet off of the adjacent street network, and we put it internal to the garage. So I want you to valet your car. You come in, and you would valet, you'd circle around, and you would enter the valet area right here, which is on our second parking level. And that's going to, you know, alleviate and keep the street network open around us. So just real quick summary. Do want to state that we do comply with all of the site design qualitative standards for Level 3 site plan, which are seen above. But do want to pay close attention to, there were two standards that the city said that we didn't comply with in regard to six of our waivers. All six of those waivers have to deal with active use for the parking structure from the ground, from floor 2 to 5. Three of them are the articulation of the slabs coming out. You know, the 3D slabs that go out, they go up, and they curve out. Okay, we've done that for the architecture of the structure to make it unique and to make it stand out. So that's the reason why three of those variances are there. I'm sorry, three of those waivers are there. And then the other three have to deal with actually a percentage of having active use along your frontage. We have active use, as you saw, all the way around the ground floor, heavily active use with retail lobbies and everything else. It's just the parking structure from floors 2 to 5. We don't meet that percentage. And in closing, we believe that we do meet the intent of this, these particular standards. And the reason why we meet the intent of these standards is because, you know, art is active use. As you walk or drive by the parking structure, the second through ninth floors are all, are all active. Every time you move, your visual experience changes. It's constant-evolving art. The art keeps your brain engaged and interested with the never-ending vantage points. We believe the parking structure is 100% active use from the second to ninth floor and does meet the intents of the aforementioned zoning code standards. A regular garage draws your eye to the vehicles because there's nothing else to see. Your eye is looking for stimulus. It wants to go to the most interesting thing. And a plain garage, that's the car. Well, that's not what we have with our particular parking structure with the art of the structure and the art from Felici and the geometric patterns that move. That's what your eye will be drawn to. That's the active use from floors 2 to 9. And with that, I'll turn it back to Brian for closing. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. So Felice, by the way, I'm going to drill him for the next month to say Felice instead of Felice. Felici. So the key elements here are the space itself, the tower, and the parking structure and the art. And so what we wanted to make the point of is that this is all one project. It is all integrated, it is all together. Yes, there is subjective views that go into this. But the reality of what it is, and when you look at the code, it was created in design against those four major roadways. It was created for the site that it exists on, and it allows for multiple opportunities to bring a unique piece of art by a world-renowned artist and integrate it into our facility that changes as you move along and around the site, engaging pedestrians throughout the day, throughout the night. And what we're hoping for is that you will recommend approval with the waivers as proposed so that we can move forward and that we go to the City Commission, which I believe is going to be scheduled in October.
All right, thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Peter, go ahead, please.
Brian, could you explain what you mean by convertible garage space?
I can. So basically, the way that the garage is structured, you can take that top floor, and if people stop driving, you can actually turn it into a number of different uses. And there's a letter that's attached that is part of Mr. Kelly's TDM report that, from Mr. Brosh, about how that can happen. But you basically can convert that space. There's enough room to put enclosure, whether it's for some storage or some micro units, depending on what the market may need. It's allowed that it could actually be converted from garage space to something else.
Okay, but you're losing parking on that level, and then you're creating a demand for parking if you have office uses.
So that, the idea, so that's a specific element of the transportation demand management ordinance that the city passed. It would only happen or only work if people really stopped driving.
Okay.
Which would be great.
Other questions of the applicant? Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I just, I had a couple of questions. One, I wanted to ask if the building has any sort of crown lighting or any kind of illumination. It seems like those steps at the top really lend themselves to some lighting features.
So, one second. There's a, by the way, there's a delay on the video. So Kristin, who's watching, is getting a little bit of a delay. But if you give me one second, I'm going to get my phone and see if she answers that question.
Okay.
Not yet. My suspicion is that we hadn't gotten to that level of detail yet. But certainly, I will, I know she's watching, and as soon as it comes in, I'll let you know that.
Okay. Also, I want to dig into the parking structure a little bit. I, you know, I think we all recognize that parking structures are a real design challenge. And we've gone to plenty of cities where we just see the ugliest of parking structures that we think are going to look better than they actually do in the execution. I'm, when I look at your renderings and I see these clean ceilings on your parking garage, it doesn't really, and I guess what I want to ask is that typically in a parking structure, you're going to have sprinklers, you're going to have pipes, you're going to have utilities. There's all sorts of things that are on the underside of the roof on each level. In your renderings, they're just shown as this clean white. Is that, is there something here that I'm missing when I look at those elevations?
Sorry. I'm going to go back to, yeah, I'm going to answer that, but I'm going to go then, I'm going to answer your question. The first question, she said, yes, there will be lighting.
Okay.
So that's the answer to that. So the architecture will have to include certain elements of sprinkler heads or whatever it may be. That doesn't necessarily have to be inconsistent with the design. It can be painted in, it can be part of the structure. But the idea is that this really is a very clean, very simple, very straightforward design. And so what it won't have is a bunch of ductwork and other things that you typically have to see because you have enclosure, where you have to now move air in and out because the air is able to move much more cleanly through the structure itself. But yes, will there be sprinklers? There will have to be sprinklers. That's incorporated into the concept. I don't know whether it was actually placed on the rendering, but it doesn't detract from what they're accomplishing with that, was the idea.
No, but I, but I think in terms of transparency and asking the board to take a leap of faith that this open-air parking structure is going to be a piece of art, it really comes down to the execution of it because it can be incredible, world-class, something that people come in from all over to look at, or it can be something that we all regret located at, basically, it's a centerpiece location. And it's up on the front side of the site, facing Dixie and Lakeview and Okeechobee. And so its prominence makes the details so important. Are the, is the artwork painted? Just, is it just painted with regular paint? Is this just, is this a poured concrete structure with just painted surfaces?
So just painted is a little overste, it's not regular paint. It is specific paint that he designs when he gets here. So what he does is he'll look at, and we've talked to Sibylle about this quite a bit with the Art Life Coordinator for the city, about what the right paint is for the right environment, making sure the colors work with the structure itself. So that what he does is he will, once the structure is built, he comes, he walks it, he tapes it, he works it, he goes through, picks the paint based on what works with the structure itself as it's finally built. And so the concepts that you see are what he has in play. And then he picks which color fits to the right mode when he actually is on there. But it is paint. And there will be a maintenance agreement and a maintenance responsibility that we'll enter into with the city. We've spoken to Sibylle about that as well. It's a requirement of the Art Life Ordinance so that it's maintained, it's kept up, so that it will always be consistently there.
When you speak of lighting and that the artwork will be visible at night, are you talking about fluorescent wall packs, just lighting the underside of the deck so that you can see this? Is, how does the lighting, because the lighting has to be artistically designed. It can't be utilitarian designed.
The lighting is not designed, no, it is not. In fact, it's a lighting designer that would work with Verini with the final product to identify the specifics of how the light fits so that it works within the art and the structure. It's all a combined element at the end of the day. So there, Mr. Cohen is going to engage a world-class lighting designer to go with his world-class architect and artist. He doesn't, he doesn't go halfway when he does this. And so the lighting will be coordinated with the ultimate art at the end of the day.
When you introduced the artist at the beginning and you showed examples of his work, it seemed like most of them were smaller scale, nothing of this magnitude. Were there examples that, of an entire building? Or were they?
There is.
More like interior spaces or?
So there are, there's actually one, oops, I went too far. He did. He did in Italy that I had seen where it actually does utilize the entire set of structures, not a single, but sets of structures that he has. There's a video that I do not have with me. It was presented.
I mean, I wish we could see an example of it in a large-scale application. These particular images are very, well, they're really interior small spaces. They're not like a seven-story building at the heart of our downtown.
So there is, the reason I didn't use the ones that I've talked about in Italy is because it's a video. It's a huge file video that was, it was shown to the Art Life Committee. I just didn't embed the huge video, but he has done that as well. And it does incorporate into the larger scale.
And I guess my last question is that, are you asking, are you asking the board to make a finding that art that moves as one walks down the street is an active use?
No. What I'm asking is for you to recognize that it's a valid position for the waiver that's being requested. Each piece would need to be considered in its own, but nobody really, the code wasn't written to consider what we're doing. So it, it's, I'm not asking a code change, and it, so it doesn't strictly meet the definition, but that's why Josh talked about it meeting the intent. We're trying to get to the same place.
I mean, I personally really appreciate the dynamic design of the garage. The Lincoln Road Garage is highly touted by architects. It makes a lot of 10 best lists. And again, you know, it's, when you're looking at two-dimensional drawings that aren't, that don't have all of the details, when we're talking about the utilitarian aspects, the lighting aspects, there's no three-dimensional modeling, there's no real-world imaging here other than these pictures, it just makes it more difficult. But I do want to tell you that, I mean, I think that this idea of the dynamic design of the parking structure, the upturned edges, the irregularity of it is exciting, but I'm asking you these questions because I'm concerned that the execution will result in disappointment for the city.
So I've got some answers in more detail. So one of which is the lighting designer that Kristin mentioned. It is architectural-grade concrete, specifically, it's white. It is not a typical gray, so it will be that white that you see. It is, the purpose, and Kristin talks about this quite a bit every time we talk about this, is about trying to create something as light as possible. You have to have some mass, you have to have the large structures, trying to lighten it up as much as you can, so it will be white in that way. And it will be state-of-the-art LED lighting, definitely not utilitarian.
All right.
And she also confirmed Verini's larger pieces as well, and I apologize, I did not bring those. But I promise you, there's a note being made to get that put together.
Do I have any other questions?
I have a couple. Andre, do you have any questions? I'll just go down the line if that's okay. Or just, I'll get you next. Do you have any questions?
I have some comments. It looks like a fantastic project. It's commend everyone involved. Yeah, some of the renderings just seem a little, not deceiving, but when you see it from the front, which we're seeing now on the left side, and on the right, you see the more perspective. So, yeah, I was curious. I wasn't able to see the drawings when we had spoken, and I was anticipating something that was going to be more sculptural, where it is, the canvas is the parking garage. And now I see that it's a manipulated painted surface, which I think in different viewpoints is interesting. It also, one thing I had made a comment, or was thinking in my, just your presentation, was it seems like the parking garage and the building are too separate, at least on the plan view. But then when you see it in perspective where you had the Paseo, that view was really engaging. I mean, that's, it doesn't seem to pass when you look at it in the plan view. So it looks like you've handled the landscape very well. I am a little concerned about the interior between the two structures and wondered if it's, what the reasoning is there for that? Because a glass building that's, you know, so tall and you're right next to it, I feel like the parking garage helps you with scale, but I feel like there's still, you're in a canyon, so.
So it, the design allows for some shading, so you're not getting the beating sun, which is important, obviously. The idea of the Paseo is to keep it open as much as possible, and it allows for flexibility. So as Josh showed in one of the examples, there was the movable furniture, so I'm running through this. You can see that there's furniture that can go out, but what we didn't want to do is clutter that interior with a whole lot of stuff so that it can be utilized and flexible in a multitude of different ways. And one of the things that Mr. Cohen, when we talked about the landscaping particularly, was that he wants to make sure that area can be utilized in different ways. So if you wanted, if there's an opportunity for a special event that can be held there outside, you've got shade, you've got, there's actually a bridge from the Palm Court to the building that actually provides additional shade so that it allows for different opportunities to work within the space, to utilize it that way. And that's why it's sort of more of an open-air kind of an opportunity.
Yeah, I just say, I share the same concerns that, that.
John.
John. Apologies. John was mentioning about, you know, this being at the pinnacle of West Palm Beach and it to be a parking garage, this kind of seems like a anticlimactic situation. But, I mean, the project looks great, so I really just think that, need to think long and hard about, about the treatment of the, of the parking garage, but it does look like a fabulous project in a bubble.
All right, thank you, Andre. Carla, do you have some questions? Go ahead.
Just a couple of questions. And first of all, in terms of the interior, I think that that's where many of us are concerned, the interior of the parking garage. I can clearly see the architectural and nature of the exterior, but there are lots of wonderful parking garages across the United States that tell a story on each level in terms of the interior. So I think my expectation, and I would have liked to have seen a rendering of one of the floors, of the interior floors, because what I think I'm hearing you say is that it's, you know, going to be a white metallic kind of color and LED, and that's boring as all get out. And so I would expect a little bit more for the designer that you're using. The exterior is great. I actually do think it's a bit of a work of art, but I was really surprised at what sounds like to me, the dullness of the interior. And if you look at each floor, parking garage floor, by having some kind of art, what painted, you know, painted visual design or even a sculpture, that adds to the active use. The other key point I'd like to make in terms of that concept of active use and that convertible space, it was interesting that you mentioned that it could be used for storage or something like that. When you visit parking garages, for example, in Washington DC, there's often an area on each floor where you can sit, you can have a cup of coffee, you can kind of hang out. Now, of course, managing that, you know, it can be a problem. There's pluses and minuses to that. But they create active spaces on those parking garage levels. And so, yes, you're going to give up a parking space or two, but as we talk about, you know, these waivers and that active use concept, that may be something to think about as well because you really actually, to me, want to make this parking garage not only, you know, architecturally sound, but an interactive space. And I think that there are plenty of examples in the United States, Salt Lake City, Washington DC, where the parking garages are more, are becoming increasingly interactive spaces. So I just wanted to make that recommendation, particularly since it is on the tent site, which is, you know, the crown jewel coming into downtown.
Thank you. Ken, any questions?
I'm going to slightly disagree in the sense that I think the minimalist aspect of this is appealing to my senses. I think that you need to have a minimalist look at it if you're going to be accentuating the art that you're trying to portray on the multiple sides. I think you already have a challenge, given the fact that you're surrounded by streets, you're a soul block, and so you needed to do something to, one, provide parking and provide an interactive space and that active use. So to me, I like this design. I think I repeatedly saw the word iconic from the staff report, and I thought, okay, well, how can you make a parking garage more iconic? And if you're going to be putting that facade on the front, kind of like what we have next door, to me, that's not iconic. That's just blocking it and providing less breeze. And aesthetically, I don't think that's where we're moving as far as what people want to see is completely covered unless you were creating like a giant green wall, which is not really cost prohibitive. So to me, I like this design. I think you've done a good job at figuring out a way to make the space work and make people want to look at it. And you have done what you should with regards to providing active use around the entire perimeter, which is difficult.
If I could just interject, we're going to have a full discussion after all the evidence here. This is an opportunity to ask him a specific question. We'll have that discussion, but we probably shouldn't have it until all the evidence has come in.
Okay, so my question is, and then like, when you were talking with staff, where did the conversation lead to more iconic? How can you make this more iconic? Can you make it more iconic?
So the iconic is a bit in the eye of the beholder, quite obviously. I remember sitting here when one of my friends, a fellow lawyer, presented a project that he said was iconic, and I had the baseball stadium coming up right after it, and I went, I can't use the word iconic. So, you know, it really centers on the structure itself, on the tower, the use of the glass, the light nature of it, the way that it rises to the top. I'm going to totally butcher any type of description of it. Josh and Kristin know far better. But that that really becomes your focal point as you're coming in. And then utilizing the structure, the garage, the parking structure as best we could and utilizing the art and opening it. Iconic in a parking structure is, as you know, a little bit difficult, but it's about trying to maximize the opportunities to do different things throughout the site. And so this is, you know, a focal point, and the tower itself really brings things to the front. And then that entry, again, you've got an entry that, you've got a drop-off area on quadrille, you've also got the rideshare spots there for pickup. It's got an overhang. We worked with DOT to get some authorization to do that into the right-of-way, and then a 30-foot grand lobby that really brings everybody in as well, literally and figuratively.
So you didn't have a meeting of the minds on iconic with the staff? That's basically.
Well, I think to the, I mean, I don't know, we never actually talked specifically about whether something was iconic. I don't think we ever talked in that specific concept.
Okay.
Any other questions to you? Okay, Deborah.
Yeah, I did have a question regarding the maintenance of the art, but you did answer most of it. And so I wanted to know, and I go back to, I just left a fantastic parking garage, and you mentioned Washington DC. I was there, and then we saw another awesome garage in Dallas. And it's really resident and people focus with similar artwork, but what was most intriguing was the history and information that was presented on each floor. And so therefore, that's what I wanted to know, is something else going to be added to this, where you can add those bits of pieces of information? So that as people park or come back to their cars, they will have that chance to stop and read that and learn more about the city. The other question I had was, had to do with one of the waivers on, several of the waivers on the trees, and which side of the parking garage those trees would be minimized with what you were asking for.
So on the first question, I think the answer is probably yes. I don't know exactly because I haven't been able to walk through that process. When we get to building permit, I suspect that the Verini art will not eat up, if you will, the entire, I have to walk away from AIPP, the entire art life component of the project. And so there may be opportunities to incorporate other elements, and I made a note to try to, you know, see what we can do about incorporating that into the structure itself at the different levels. We do have the Palm Court. There may be opportunities within the Palm Court to incorporate some of that as well. Just have to make sure that qualifies for public because it's private open space. So if it didn't, there are other opportunities. The trees is in the Paseo. So as I mentioned, the, you know, Mr. Cohen is trying to keep that Paseo as an open area. So you have the trees, if I can, I'm going to pull back to the landscape, I'm going the wrong way. On the landscape plan, what you can see is, and I'll use the cursor a little bit, you see the street trees walking around, and then you have planters and trees at the corners where people can sit under there. And then moving in a little, you have two on either side of that entryway into the Paseo. And then it's in the Paseo itself that we did not put additional plantings in the core of the Paseo as you walk from the structure through, and to utilize that space as more open space that he wants to have, the opportunity for more movable furniture and use for special events and things of that nature.
Thank you.
Your question answered then? Okay. Peter, do you have another question? Go ahead, please.
Yeah, Brian, during our conversations, we did discuss that being such a very difficult artwork to visualize, an animation would have been very helpful.
We did.
And my questions to you are, can you address the city's comments regarding waivers 11, 12, and 13 that deal with the active use liners?
So, yes. The animation couldn't be done that quickly, unfortunately. We did try to put as much together as we could. And just so you understand, we can't, we're on a leased timeframe, not to mention the market that is demanding the, I mean, I understand.
But you didn't do the design justice. That's the only problem.
I appreciate that, and I can promise Kristin is taking notes because there's not a conversation we've ever had that she hasn't taken notes. And we will talk about some of that and try to present that as well in a different way to the commission. I think the answer to that was what Josh walked through at the very end of his presentation. There were two elements. This really is about interaction and activity with the pedestrian, with even the traveling public on the road, whether it be, hopefully, one day by mass transit or trolley, when maybe we can all be comfortable even in a bus or on a trolley without masks. Those opportunities are there. So to create active use going up in a different way isn't feasible because we can't get what we need to get with the artwork. And it really, and it would take, and it would create the need to actually create a much larger garage. You'd have to go up in order to get the parking spaces in. So if you tried to put, if you tried to put an active use, somebody inside, if you will, a space, floors two through five, you're now going to add probably another two to three stories of the parking structure itself, which of course, none of us really wanted to do. And so what we tried to accomplish is, instead of a green wall or something that's typical of that nature, which are also very difficult to maintain, is to utilize the artwork to keep the activity alive.
Okay. I just wanted to point out to you for reference, if you were to look up Rice University's parking garage, that would be an excellent solution to a similar problem that you have here.
Thank you, Peter. Does anyone else have any other questions of the applicant? And if not, we thank you, and Anna Marie, you should speak next.
Thank you very much. And we're still here if there's anything else that comes up.
Understood.
Anna Maria Ponte, Cedarland Designer for the record. I'll thank the applicant for very thorough presentation, so I will not describe the project at all. I'm just going to go straight to staff positions for this proposal. As we have discussed, this is a very complex project. It's a very interesting project, and in general, staff fully supports the project. We believe what the architect has proposed as an iconic building, as we were mentioning, with this tower that has this elliptical shape standing in the middle of this public open space, the creation of the Paseo behind it and the parking garage behind it is the right approach for this site. I think will stand out on this prominent location for the downtown and will make definitely a good quality of open space in this difficult site where you have these busy roads going throughout the four sides of the project. So staff definitely supports the location of the tower, the parking garage, and how the applicant has proposed the site plan design. We have gone through all the variants or the waivers that the applicant has requested, and I want to explain the staff position for each of them. We have 16 waivers that the staff is supporting. The first ones are waived one, two, three, that are in reference to exceeding the maximum setback for the ground floor. at the maximum setback for the ground floor. We staff, uh, fully support these waivers. As I mentioned, the public open space that the applicant is created on the ground floor has a great value and, uh, it can be achieved with a greater, um, ground floor setback. And it is beneficial for the project and for the city. So we fully support those ones. Uh, waivers four to six are requiring the reduction of the conditional setback required for parking uses above the fifth level. This is one of the waivers that staff is supporting in reference to the parking garage. And the reason why we're supporting this one is because, one, the, the project requires a large number of parking spaces. The applicant is, um, building the maximum allowed by the code, which is in any case, less than the maximum allowed for the rest of the downtown. The Okeechobee Business District has a, a less amount of parking allowed for this type of project. So, but it's still that they are maximizing the parking spaces. So they need to put a large number of parking spaces to, uh, fulfill their needs or what they have told us is the, the market needs for an office like this. So, uh, the, the current code requires, um, additional setbacks above the fifth floor for parking uses only. Um, staff is supporting these variants because if we require the applicant to comply with these conditional setbacks, what will happen is the parking garage will go higher. And for a standalone parking garage as the one that is proposed, what we want to do is try to limit the size of this parking as much as possible. So we think it's beneficial for the project and, um, will make best use of the space. And, uh, this is, uh, indication of what will be basically the extent of the waiver. So these will be the additional setback that they will have to provide. So as you can see, we'll basically, uh, make additional parking levels because the functionality of the park or efficiency will be compromised. Regarding waivers seven and eight, then in reference to an increase in the maximum footprint at level six and seven, and the tower level eight, and the parking level 10, staff also supports, uh, the variance or the waiver. Again, due to the relationship with the large number of parking spaces and the fact that the parking garage is a standalone structure. Um, the regulation, as Brian mentioned, was drafted more for the typical building that is a parking garage embedded on the first floors of an office tower. In this case, they opted this additional, uh, separation of the two elements, which we believe is definitely a benefit and, and a good solution for the project. So in this case, the footprint grows because the parking garage is a standalone and there is no portion of the garage included on the ground levels of the office tower. So staff thinks it's a justifiable reason and it's beneficial for the project again. In this case, staff is just, uh, recommending a condition of approval in which the parking garage rooftop terrace, uh, shall be required to be totally landscaped. As you can see in here, the parking has the center pump cord, what the applicant is calling the center pump cord. It has two, uh, the two sides of the rooftop are not usable or they are not landscaped. So, uh, we understand this is limited due to the fire requirements for exit from that rooftop terrace. So we're not requiring them to activate, uh, those, uh, areas of the rooftop with, uh, space that is usable, but we, uh, are recommending that that is treated with a greenscape or something that basically enhances aerial view. So it's not going to be, um, just a roof covering. For waivers eight, nine, and 10, uh, regarding the reduction of the minimum percentage of active uses required at the ground level along Okeechobee Boulevard and Lakeview, and waiver number 14 regarding the reduction of minimum depth of active use liners on the ground floor along Dixie Highway, staff fully supports this waiver. The applicant is doing a big effort to do active uses on the ground floor. Um, the project is, the site is a difficult site. It has four frontages, all primary street or avenue. So there's no side B for the project at all. So they have done, um, the best they can to accommodate the entrances to the garage and the services in the minimal dimension possible. It's fully activated on the ground floor along Dixie Highway. And then it has, uh, the uses along the Paseo. Uh, with the design of the Paseo, we allow applicants to count public open spaces at the Paseo as active uses because it's going to be fully activated and the tower element will definitely be fully activated. So this is one on the ground floor that staff fully supports. And we believe the applicant has done a great effort to, um, minimize the impact of those services that have to be anyway, at least a portion of them located along the front edge line. Uh, for these waivers, staff recommends two special conditions. One, um, is what Brian has been discussing. Staff is recommending that the design of the Paseo, um, be enhanced with landscape and benches that provides aesthetic improvement to the space and comfort, uh, for the general public. We were concerned that the design, at least the drawings that were presented to staff, did not have any furniture at all in the Paseo. And so there were no spaces where the people could sit or, uh, linger in the space. Um, it doesn't have any, uh, landscape either. The landscape is located around the tower on the south side or the north side, but along the portion of the Paseo, it's, uh, very limited. We're recommending that, um, be enhanced in that sense. We understand, um, the applicant's idea of maybe activating this space. So I'm sure we can work out something where they can provide some additional elements that are movable, some additional landscape that is on the edges, but still provide the benefit for the, or the flexibility that the applicant is looking. Um, we're also recommending a condition where the, uh, non-active uses that are the portion for the FPL transformer and the type of elements on the two sides be screened with the same storefront material than the rest of the active uses. So they're proposing glass storefront. So in those areas where possible, we're recommending the, the treatment be extended to include those non-active uses or other high-quality material that mitigate the negative impact of having these non-active uses on the front edge line. Regarding the waiver 16 and 17, uh, regarding, um, is to reduce the total number of trees required along the street frontage. This has, um, some, um, reasons related to the fact that the, oh, uh, Lakeview Avenue, Okeechobee Boulevard, and actually Quadrille Boulevard are all Florida Department of Transportation roads. So the, uh, line of sight for the exit of the garage is very, uh, limited and they will have to remove even some of the trees that are shown in these drawings. So some of the trees along Lakeview and some of the trees along, um, along Lakeview and along Okeechobee will have to be removed due to that. So, um, we recommend, they are asking for those, those waivers for those ones. So what staff is recommending due to the fact that this is not something that the applicant can control. We're recommending, um, approval for the waiver, but we're suggesting that the total number of trees required for the project be calculated and then they have to be located within the project. And we think they can be re-accommodated within the, um, remaining of the open space that is proposed around the tower element. Regarding waivers 18 and 19, to increase the maximum allow width of the curb guard, and also waiver 20 to reduce the minimum size of the loading dock, staff has worked with the applicant to, uh, design the entrances to the parking garage and to the loading to the minimum width possible. It is a large parking garage, so it requires two entrances and two exits for efficiency, and it has one, uh, loading entrance. Uh, they have minimized the width of those entrances to the maximum possible, but they definitely exceed, um, the maximum allow for the downtown. We support that waiver, having them together and combined is the best option for the project to minimize the impact to the pedestrian realm. Uh, the other, the waiver number 20, it ha, it has to do with the size of the loading dock. Uh, we are also supporting that. There are different companies of transportation that already have smaller trucks that serve the urban environment, so that should not be an issue. And, uh, the constraints of the site justify that they have a smaller loading area. Um, and now I'm going to go to the, uh, more controversial ones. The staff does not support the waivers requested to reduce the minimum required setback above the ground floor on, on the waiver 11, 12, and 13 to reduce the required active use liner for the floors two and five. And this is what we were talking about and you were discussing regarding the parking garage. Um, I have to say that, um, we believe the design that the applicant is presented, uh, staff again supports in general the concept for the, uh, for the project. The applicant has done a good job trying to have a parking structure that is something that stands out, that has a special design. We understand the concept of creating some, something different than the tower and how they are not the same design. Um, so we support that and, uh, we, uh, kind of applaud the applicant's idea of doing this very, um, different and creative design of extending the elements of the garage and lifting them and then incorporating the art. Um, however, we have to admit that it's a challenge how to accommodate a 10-story parking garage on this location. It's, uh, if you look at the size of this garage, it's a 50,000-floor plate garage. So it's a big garage. It has 243, uh, feet long along, um, Dixie Highway by 204, uh, feet along, uh, Okeechobee or Lakeview. So it is a large structure and it's difficult to, how to do this garage without providing the active uses that are required by the, by the code. Staff does not, I mean, despite that we are recommending, uh, denial of the waiver, that doesn't mean that we, uh, are requiring or we will not support something that, uh, it, like this, that is, uh, a garage that does not have the active uses incorporated in it. I think the, the way they are laying out the garage on the project justifies not to having the active uses on the garage. The staff position in this case is that we believe the applicant is proposing a, a creative concept for the garage, but, um, we think is not sufficient, still not sufficient to elevate the quality of the parking garage, uh, above their utilitarian use. Uh, so I think it's, it's more like, can we push them a little bit more? This is such a prime location for the city that, uh, we are concerned, that if we don't do this right, we're going to end up with a parking structure that looks like exposed garage in this prime location. The cars are visible from all the angles and, I mean, you can argue that that's part of the design and we understand that from the applicant, they want to create this transparent element that basically, uh, allows kind of the flow of the parking garage. Uh, we have concerns with the impact of the lighting at night. Um, I was happy to hear that the, the lighting will be more tied to, to the art itself, but it still will be a part of the lighting that will be totally utilitarian and what will be the, um, that impact in the surrounding. It, it's not providing the architectural screen required and it's not providing the active uses provided, required. So we think it has to be a little bit beyond, um, the design that they are presenting. Um, I have one scale comparison because it's difficult to grasp the size of this garage. I just measured the Brightline parking garage that is already built. It's on a Vernea Street that is a secondary street. It has a building on top. It's 184 feet in length. It's also a 10-story, uh, parking garage. So if you imagine the scale of the garage that is proposed at this corner is basically, uh, for size, the size of this garage, but it's the same height. So it's 10 stories. And if you imagine the, the, the size of the proposed garage is actually the smaller size is 204. So it's a big structure on this location that, and that's what we are concerned. We know that is what is needed for the project. So we're not requiring them to lower the garage because it's not going to be possible or reduce the number of parking spaces because they say they need that. The code allows them to do that. So we're like, we would like them to push the design a little bit further and offer something that is, um, a little bit more for the city because it's going to be, uh, in there forever. And we don't think the design is still there. I mean, it's, it's kind of progressive and advanced, but not quite there. This already mentioned, um, we believe the design needs to do something outstanding that justifies the absence of the traditional architectural screen and the active uses required by the code. That's the reason why staff is recommending denial for the waivers. Again, it's not because we will not support a waiver for the active uses, but because we, we think the design has to be pushed a little bit further to do something, uh, that is, uh, complimentary to the design of the tower and in such a prime location that, um, will stand alone as a, a very outstanding parking garage. That is, uh, all that I have, um, from staff perspective. As you know, we are recommending approval, um, for this project for the, the 16 waivers that they are requesting, um, based on the funding of facts that the petition meets all the 10 variance standards outlined in the Article II, Section 9438, D6 of the LDRs. Um, but staff is recommending denial for the waivers regarding active use requirements above the first floor and minimum setback above the first floor, as is included in the page four of the staff report. And the proposed parking, based on, on a, a staff analysis, does not comply with the standards one and three of the Section 9435. That concludes the staff presentation.
Oh, yeah, thank you so much. Any questions of staff? Let me start with you, Deborah. Um, Kat, any questions of staff? Go ahead.
A quick question, uh, regarding, uh, these denials. What was the level of discussion as you talked about sort of, you know, bumping up the, the architectural look and, and feel of this, uh, parking garage? What, and what were some of the concerns that the staff heard, uh, in terms of, uh, the architectural design and bumping that up?
We have discussed this concern with the applicant since they came in, actually before submitting for, uh, the application. They have accommodated all sorts of different things for the concerns that is, staff expressed in terms of the site plan for other issues. But the design of the, of the garage as they presented is something that they are really believing and they have, they don't think staff is, um, they don't share staff's concerns. Let's put it that way. So kind of we, we were not able to agree on doing anything else with the garage. Uh, we did not even reach the point of discuss any other options. We at this point have, basically, we are, have expressed those concerns to the applicant and the applicant is, is defending their idea and their proposal.
Thank you. Peter, any questions of staff?
Anna Maria, uh, you were talking earlier about there may be a possibility of trees being removed to provide sightlines. Is it at all possible to just include taller trees that would give you the visual clearance instead of?
Unfortunately, no. Um, FDOT is pretty strict about the, uh, sideline. Uh, we argue with them all the time, but they are very strict. And if it is in the view line, they do not allow the trees. There's, sometimes they accept certain variances, um, but most of the time, they are basically movable.
Thank you. Andre, any questions?
Uh, no questions at this point.
John. Uh, I'm going to thank you for that really excellent presentation. Um, I really appreciate your comment about the fact that I think the active use requirement is a great fallback position that, that you're open to successful alternatives. Do you think that if you had more certainty that this design would be a success, you could support it? Do you, I, I mean, do you have the same reservations that I've expressed in my questions about the certainty and the execution and the eventual outcome of allow? Because, because for all of us to make a decision here today to support something like this, as prominent as it is at this location, is a huge leap of faith. Do you feel that the developer could have maybe, do you feel that staff could have maybe supported this with just a better package and presentation and more certainty for the staff?
That's a very good question. I, I don't know. I mean, I, I heard your questions about the pipes for, uh, that will go on the ceiling. That is a reality. They will have some infrastructure in there, some things that we don't like to see and they have to be there. That happens with this project and happens with all projects. We just start to see the gas meter on the ground floor where you don't want it. So that's, we have to deal with those things. So that is an important part of the discussion. Um, I think my reservation or staff reservation about the parking garage is, as they say, we appreciate that the applicant is proposing this advanced design, this creative design. We like the design. It's interesting, it's different, but we don't think, uh, it's enough because there are certain viewpoints that you're not going to see that variation and you're only going to see those slabs going horizontal. So, um, that is our concern. It's so big and I'm going to show you because you mentioned, um, the comparison with the, um, 1111 Lincoln Road. So we look at that and I know the architect doesn't like us comparing it to it, but the developer was mentioning it as a reference when we started discussing this. But it's important to discuss the scale of, uh, how different these are. The proposed garage that we are seeing here is, as I say, is 50,000 square feet floor plate, has 204 feet by 245. It's 10 stories. The 1111 Lincoln Road is only 23,000 square feet floor plate. So it's less than half. So that's a big difference in terms of the scale. It's 160 by 160. It's seven stories, it's 85, uh, feet in, in height. And the variations are different. I mean, they have, the columns are more, uh, varying the form, this, this lab have different. So you can really see, uh, more, um, I will not call it iconic, but a different structure and how it's outstanding from different viewpoints.
It's more sculptural.
Yes, and I, I understand the, the applicant is trying to do this with this garage and I think they have a good start for it, but we don't think it's enough for the size of this garage on this location for the city.
And for the record, you and I didn't coordinate that I was going to mention Lincoln Road and you were going to have this slide ready.
No, but it has, it has been brought to our attention and we have discussed it. It's in, I mean, everybody knows this parking garage in Lincoln Road, so it's a good reference.
Um, Anna Maria, I have a question. Um, can you pull back to the slide? I think right before this one, you had, just showed the, the proposed.
I think right before this one you had, just showed the proposed garage, kind of the front view of it. Thank you, that's a good one. What is the practical effect if we were to deny these waivers? What would look different than what they're proposing? When we say active use, I'm not clear how visually that would look differently. And also combined with that, if we make these requirements, would it have to make the structure taller?
Yes. And that is why staff is open to give a waiver for the active uses. I think it's not fully realistic to try to get active uses on this design, not only because it will impact the size of the garage, it will grow because they have to remove spaces, but then you have all the implications of you have to provide two means of ingress for the active uses and the fire and it gets complicated. So, and maybe I have to backtrack a little bit. The code right now allows for office buildings to have parking garages without the active uses, but the code was designed in a way that it was conceived as a parking podium with a tower on top. And in that case, the code says for office uses with more than 200,000 square feet of office, they are allowed to not to provide the active uses on the garage levels, but extend the facade of the tower down to the lower level and basically screen the garage. So nobody will know that a garage is behind, but in reality you have a garage on the, on the lower levels of the park. In this case, that is not an option and I include that information in the staff report because the decision was to separate the towers.
Right, right.
So that's why staff is in support of, will be in support.
So how would it look differently when we say active use?
The active use, maybe, the active use means usable space for human occupation. So it's like in these levels, two to five, 25% of this front touch, because they are providing 35% with the tower, will have to have some office uses in here or some residential uses or something. So it will definitely be different because it will not be an open structure anymore. It will be windows with active uses. That's what we call active uses. The same on Dixie will be 60% of that front touch or 50, 60% will have to have that, that use enclosed space.
Do you worry that that would lose the clean design that they're going for?
Yes. I mean, we are worried about that and sometimes it's like you say, be careful what you wish for, right? But, and that's why again, we, we are willing, when we discuss with the applicant, we're willing to support a waiver for the active use, but we don't think the design of the architectural treatment is, is there to support the waiver.
And without the waiver, how many more stories tall would this structure have to be? Let's say they're, they're given no waivers, they have to do exactly what the code requires. How many additional stories would it require?
Yeah, I'm not sure. We'll have to run the numbers, but I, probably two additional floors.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you so much. Any other questions? Go ahead, Karen.
I'm sorry. So can I just ask one other question? Because I do want to get back to that concept of active use and I know you're saying office space or what have you. Would there, would the staff be willing to, you know, broaden the definition, for lack of a better term, of active use in terms of what I had mentioned earlier about, you know, just having some comfortable space, you know, for sitting or some landscaping or something like that, as I've seen in other types of parking garages? I mean, would, would there be an opportunity? Because I realize you didn't discuss a lot of options with the applicant at the time, but would there be an opportunity to just sort of broaden that, you know, definition a little bit?
Yeah, staff will be open to support the waiver if the proposed architectural treatment or screen of the garage is sufficient in, in the view of the staff, as Brian said, it's very subjective in this case, to compensate for the lack of the active uses. So we have discussed that. It seems in this case, it is probably better not to have the active use and have, because of the standalone configuration of the parking garage. So it will be a matter of what is the architectural treatment and the design offer or propose for that garage structure to compensate for the lack of the active use.
All right, any other questions? If not, thank you, go ahead.
I do have a couple of questions about the screening of the parking structure. Is that not required to have any kind of, I mean, what, what we'll see driving north on Dixie is cars and it's, there's going to be no doubt about it that we're, we're going to be looking at a parking garage as you go north on Dixie approaching this.
Approaching this project. So the language on the code is says that for, I mean, you have two things. One is the percentage of the front touch that has to have the active use and is the usable enclosed space. And then it has a specific language that talks about the architectural treatment of the non-active uses. So there's a portion of the garage that is allowed to have non-active uses and the code talks about the architectural treatment. In this case, what they are offering is the architectural treatment is this variation on the design of these labs and the profiles and the projections. That is the architectural treatment that they are offering. So, which is, it's valid. It's valid, it is considered architectural treatment. In a staff position is, we don't think is, it's enough. We need a little bit more than that.
Yeah, I think it's got to be a lot more. I mean, it's, this is like the centerpiece. Everybody going north on Dixie or, or whichever direction, like we're even passing this or seeing it from a distance, I don't think it's enough to disguise it. Maybe it will look, I think, a lot more interesting up close to it, but further away from it, it's just going to be that. That's, that's the part that I have a problem with.
Any other questions?
Just for procedural purposes, if we deny this, that part of the waiver request, what's their next option? Can they come back and try to add more of that percentage of active use within there and proceed or are we stuck with a higher parking garage?
I think, I mean, the board has several options, maybe Brian wants to talk about it, but you can deny this portion and recommend them to work on the architectural treatment of the garage further, but move them ahead to the city commission that I believe is what the applicant is wishing for. Or, or you could totally require them to redesign the garage if the board decides to and provide the active uses that are required. Okay.
Okay. If there are no other questions?
I'd like to clarify and Sam, tell me if, if I go a little far here, but you, you can't require us to redesign. So if you recommend denial of those waivers, we're going to go to the city commission and we're going to ask them to give it to us anyway. And I'll tell you why. And we've had these, as Anna said, we went through this and we, we went before the CRA board looked at it, the commission sitting as the CRA board, we had these conversations. If I screen, if I change, if I add, what you, well, I always thought it was over there, but it's just back on my balding head, what you see goes away. So Lincoln Road is, people bring it up, we've talked about it a little bit. It's really not the same, not just because of size. You can't really compare this to anything else.
Mr. Simora, I'll give you an opportunity speaker, I'd like to hear from the public first. If you just want just the narrow question she raised, that's fine.
So what happens?
I don't want to rebuttal now.
Yeah, okay. So I guess the short version to the answer to the question and I'll hold off on everything else then, is that, the one thing Anna said I totally agree with, although I don't agree with the first part where she said recommend denial, is we need to go to the city commission. And we need to, we would need to take it to them.
Ours is just a recommending board.
Correct.
So, so ultimately the city commission will make this decision.
We would obviously prefer a recommendation of approval.
Right.
But one way or the other, we need to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Simora. Okay. Would anyone for the public wish to be heard on this?
Mr. Chair, we have a couple of emails that were sent to the board and some recording. So we'll pull the recording first.
But first, while you're looking that up, is there anyone in the audience here wishes to be heard? If not, that's fine. Go ahead and we have the emails, then we'll bring them back to this board for discussion.
Hi, my name is Ashley Muldoon. I am a property owner at 480 Hibiscus Street, Suite 323 in the City Palms Building and I see, I received a notice saying that Gunston Law wants to propose a 24-story Class A office building and at 801 South Dixie and I have no desire for that to happen. I pray that you guys will take this message and that other people call in too. I think that's a terrible idea. I really just don't, I don't think that's going to add any value. We already have a parking problem. 24 stories is way too tall. It's going to impede and impact so many people's viewscapes. I just think it's a horrible idea. I think they should build something else, not nearly as tall, that won't negatively impact the area. It's finally looking good now that Rosemary Square has been revitalized and I just think that this would devalue the area and not add to anything. So if anyone wants to call me back, 703-431-170.
Can I get a clarification from you? One of the waivers you're seeking is not for the height, correct?
No, they are not asking for any waiver for.
They could do that of right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we received three emails and three public comments.
Do you mind reading them into the record unless they're very lengthy?
Pardon?
Are they very lengthy? If not, you could read it to the record if you like.
No, they're not that lengthy.
Okay, please proceed.
One from Claudia Mason at 701 South Olive Avenue. The proposed Class A office building will negatively impact traffic flow in the downtown area of the city. The city needs to manage traffic during peak hours and during construction. Traffic will negatively be impacted, especially during peak hours. There is already gridlock between 4:30 and 6:00 PM on Okeechobee Boulevard. How will the city mitigate these changes and provide for pedestrians and their safety? End of her comment. Gerald Jansky at 550 Okeechobee Boulevard, Unit 1223, says the tent site is a premier gateway property to downtown West Palm Beach. I have no issue with the first structure, office tower. However, the second structure, parking garage design. The tent site is the premier gateway property to downtown West Palm Beach. I have no issue. Actually, he's saying the office tower is being described as a world-class design and West Palm Beach citizens also deserve a world-class parking garage design. End of his comment. Mary Metz, she just left a telephone number. As you consider this project, consider the goals of the city's original requests, which were to create a gateway project to singularly identify the city and represent its spirit, meet functional needs such as facilitating transportation, provide a sense of place for both users and the public, and ensure the flexibility necessary to adapt the future needs and use. She asked several questions. Are the design elements that distinguish the project's main structure from others in major cities? Other pally design buildings are very similar to this one. Have we met our goal of having a unique design for this project? Does this design convey the spirit and statue of the city as a governmental and financial center, yet highlight the sense of neighborhood in our downtown residential community? The design includes two structures, the office building and the parking garage. Are they compatible or pleasingly complementary or are they jarring and disparate? Do we want a parking garage to be one of the last images visitors have as they leave our city? Does the project provide the transportation solutions we originally hoped for or create more transportation problems? If the city reaches its mobility goals to reduce the use of personal vehicles and increase mobility options, can the garage be converted to a different use? Can it be utilized as a public space? Given the mobility plan recently adopted by the city, what message do we send by constructing another large parking garage? There are 3,000 spaces in Rosemary Square's parking garages and an additional 2,600 spaces at the PBC Convention Center Garage, nearly all of which are empty during the day. The 1,200 spaces in the project's garage, likely empty at night and on weekends, would create over 6,800 parking spaces within approximately 500 feet of each other. Is this the best use of value property? Can we break through these silos of spaces and collaborate to cross utilize them? Finally, the tent sign is owned by the city. The project would generate revenues for the developer businesses and the city. City residences should also benefit through amenities that will enhance their quality of life and sense of place. We have one shot at getting this right. Please don't sell this asset or the residents of West Palm Beach short. End of her comment. Gina Loomis at Two City, Unit 1806. I recently bought the Two City Plaza and one of the biggest features that attracted me to the building is a wonderful view from our units and rooftop. Now the city is allowing a 24-story office building directly across the street, not similar building on the Christian Church property. Our building will be totally surrounded by taller buildings blocking the view in all directions. The view is, the view adds to the enjoyment and value of our homes in both One and Two City. These proposed office buildings are way too tall for downtown West Palm Beach and the traffic will be horrendous. I am not against development, but please downsize the height and scope of these buildings. We are not Miami. These planned buildings will depreciate our property values. Don't forget you built the canopy in the micro apartments. Two City is now 100% surrounded. We live in our homes and pay taxes, so our rights as homeowners need to be considered. End of her comment. And the final comment, actually. John Betts, 801 South Olive Avenue. I am alarmed by the proposed proposal to build a 24-story high-rise office building across the street from One and Two City Plaza. I believe that it is time for the city of West Palm Beach to stand back and evaluate what they want this city to look like in the next 10 years. The overall planning process seems to be helter-skelter across the board with attempts to drop buildings in anywhere and everywhere they can find an open lot. It is starting to look awful in general and provides no focal point or thought process about one of the biggest issues of them all. The city streets are in terrible condition and there seems to be no plan to fix them and now you're tossing in a 24-story high-rise with thousands of cars coming and going into the center core area, which is the most congested section of town. Already no one can walk the streets safely due to the rest of automobiles plowing on Dixie Highway, Okeechobee Boulevard and Lakeview Avenue. Automobiles driving either east or west on Okeechobee Boulevard and Lakeview Avenue during either side of the rush hour going through here over 50 miles per hour and sometimes 60 miles per hour. The traffic is out of control and the lights need to be reset to change every minute, not every five minutes, allowing drivers to speed at highly unsafe levels. Maybe it's time to step back and think about the transportation problems that currently exist before anyone attempts to drop in another skyscraper. But more importantly, to figure out a real plan to build this city without creating a massive city look with huge traffic problems and unsafe road conditions. You need to realize the bigger is not better every time. Stop this ridiculous construction now, please. End of his comment. Last comment comes from Jamel McCam-
Last, I hope, just so you know.
That's it?
No, you, but you said the last one was your last comment. Go ahead.
Second last.
Last comment from Jamel McCambell. We are owners of an apartment located at 801 South Olive, West Palm Beach, and have been sold since February 2006. In that time, we have witnessed an extraordinary increase in the volume of traffic using Okeechobee Boulevard as well as Lakeview. The volume to this date has caused increased noise, pollution, accidents, as well as increased danger to pedestrians. It is apparent that the limit has been reached for what could be determined as reasonable use of space to allow the construction of yet again another high-rise building consisting of over 1,000 parking spaces and almost 40, 450,000 square feet of office slash retail space would add unacceptable stress to the volume of auto traffic. The level of noise and toxins endangering to pedestrian traffic. We are unequivocally oppose this project development and thus would request that the Level 3 site plan review request not be approved. End of the comment.
Thank you. Mr. Ponte, can you come to the lectern, please? I just want to get on the record to be clear. You had said earlier, there's no height waivers being sought. Are there any traffic waivers being sought?
No.
So to be clear, for those who may be listening, we do not have the jurisdiction to address those issues here today. So, thank you.
Yeah, the project complies with height and complies with all the traffic requirements. They are building actually below what the maximum allowed development capacity that they have.
All right, thank you so much. I promised Mr. Simora a chance to, to respond. I'd ask you confine yourself to those waivers where there's a dispute with the staff.
Yes, sir. And really it's going to come down to, right, the parking garage, I was mentioning Lincoln Road is, people talk about it, it's unique. There are some elements where you have space and articulation. That's not where we stop. It's- where you have space and articulation. That's not where we stop. It's not the same. We understand. It's not a fair comparison. We didn't make the comparison. We're not trying to make the comparison. Other people have. I know that it came up because it has some of those elements, but it is different. And we didn't stop at the articulation. We didn't stop at the slabs. All of it incorporates the art, and that's what keeps things together. And I understand Mr. Hicksonbaugh's point. We're asking for a little bit of faith. And that's why I started this with the people that are at the table. Because Charles Cohen doesn't do things halfway. Because Kristin Hawkins and PCPA spend a lot of time working their designs all over the world. We are not asking you to just believe in, well, I'm certainly not just asking you to believe me, but that a lot of effort by a lot of people, including those two and Mr. Verini, to put this together in a way that really is something different. And so, yes, there's a little bit of faith to be involved, and yes, it is important. I don't know what enough means, but I can tell you this in an answer to one of the questions. I think, Mr. May, is your question on what would happen? If we have to screen, we lose the art. If we lose the art, to be frank, I think we lose the project. The art is a function of Mr. Cohen's vision in a way that I've never seen from a developer before. It is a core of how he designs, how he works. And again, I started this. He is involved deeply in every piece of this. He cares deeply about making this a very special thing. And so, yes, there is a leap of faith, but we've worked really hard to take that art. Again, it goes into the garage. It isn't on just the face of the structure. The parking structure is articulated not just for the sake of articulation, but incorporating into it the concepts that Mr. Verini has to create this unique element. Could there be potentially other elements of art or historic elements, I believe that art life allows, throughout some other areas of the garage? Potentially, yes. But what we're trying to do here is not just do what we have, and we do not want to create more mass. And we don't want to create more concrete. We want to create the area. We want to, there are environmental benefits to it as well, but we really need this to happen. In this way, this was all part of a whole. Everything was put together, together. Nothing separates one from the other. The tower itself, the connection, the, John told me we renamed the palm court, but I'm going to call it that because I don't know what he renamed it. The palm court at the very top, the utilization of the art, the articulating slabs, the glass, the openness of the passeo, this was all a cohesive thought process with some very impressive folks who've come together to work this. And Mr. Cohen is committed to this. He's got a ninety-nine-year lease with the city. He's going to be here. He's going to make sure this works. So, yes, I am asking you for a little bit of faith, and I hope that tonight you will give us the recommendation to move forward with those waivers.
Thank you so much. All right, at this point, we're going to bring it back to the board. Sir, did you want to speak on this issue?
I just wanted to ask a quick question.
No, I'm sorry. This is an opportunity to ask questions. If you wish to offer test bonuses, we'll give you that opportunity. But if you want to ask questions, you need to do it afterwards. Okay, thank you, sir. So I'm going to bring it back to the board for discussion. I usually just go down the road, but I'll ask you, if anyone wants to lead it off, would anyone like to begin their views?
You know, I do have one question.
Okay.
And maybe I missed it, but I thought I heard Mr. Ponte say that, that between the developer and the planning staff, that they had not gotten to a point of discussion, of discussing options or how they could meet together with, with those concerns about the waivers that were being denied.
So we had multiple discussions. We couldn't come to a meeting of the minds because of what I just described. The staff wants more screening, and if we do the screening, we can't do the pieces that we have put in, and so we couldn't come to the meeting of the minds. We've had multiple discussions from before the CRA concept approval.
I just want to clarify that it's not that the staff wants the screening.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't think the solution for this is just simply add a screen in in this garage because it will not be an outstanding piece, right? So we think it's more like how we can get the architect to, and I don't know if it's possible, not evolve the design a little bit further. So in those viewpoints where, where the articulation of that movement or that dynamic movement of these labs is not visible enough, there's something else that is attractive and is something that highlights the importance of the, or the structure as an sculptorial piece. So we, we don't think the solution is just simply to screen the garage. That will be terrible also.
But those discussions have not been had.
No, she said they have had those discuss-
But, but we have not just simply, we have not had the discussion with the applicant about we want a screen or not a screen because it has never moved like that. They are defending their design, which is valid.
Did you want to begin the discussion, or you just had the question? Okay, well, we're going to discuss, let me start, Carla, with you. What are your thoughts? We're just going to go down the line and just talk about it before we begin any motion?
Yeah, I'll just take two minutes. I, I've seen structures of this size, you know, in a large cities with, you know, no consideration to architecture and artwork. And I do think that parking garages actually can be a beautiful thing, and please don't look me up on Facebook or anything like that. I, I do think that there's an art to, to any kind of structure. But I, but I also think that Mr. Seymour did make a good point. We are going to have to trust that, that they will have, you know, the best intent of ensuring that this will be an interactive, artistic, iconic space. And so I think that that's really the struggle for, for us as a recommending board. So I just, I just really wanted to put that out there. But I do like the fact that they've had these discussions with staff. I do like the architectural design and the sculpting nature of the floors. I think it's beautiful exterior, but I do have some concerns about that interior space on the various levels.
Thank you. Cat.
First, I want to thank the board because I think the comments really help with this discussion, and John, your comments to start off, and frankly, your points about the smaller active uses, not just having like more office space or something like that in there, thinking outside the box. I'm going to repeat what I said initially. I, I think the design does a really good job in trying to create a really, really interesting architectural piece in that area. And I'm glad you pointed out that you're not really trying to push screening because that's kind of what I was reading in the, in the report, and I was just like, wow, that will just really hurt us more when we're driving down that road looking at a, at a screened-in parking garage versus something that you were trying to say. I got the word iconic from, from the report, and that was repeated a couple times. And I, I look at this and say that can be iconic, and you're right, we do have to trust, that is something that we're going to have to say, is we're trusting them to, to make this a wonderful piece and not just, and make it pop versus what we're looking at on a screen and to something that you can look at and say, yes, Lincoln Road. Like, immediately when you said that, I was like, oh, yeah, that's right, that, that parking garage. You do remember that, and I would love for this to be something that somebody driving by and always remembers. And I think it can get there with that group of people that are working on this project.
Thank you. Deborah?
I think, I think the design, I think where, what the architect, architect and entire staff, they've done a phenomenal job with this project. I think about driving from my home, driving east, and looking at the possibility of this rising up in front of you. I, I haven't, I've traveled, but I think this is really going to say a whole lot for West Palm Beach. And I think it's going to further expand the branding, you know, for West Palm Beach. I, I look at the tower being separate from the, from the parking garage, but I look at that first floor piece that's really going to be the connecting piece. It's going to be the showcase, you know, I do believe. I'm glad Mr. Ponte further explained or clarified the screening, that you were not pushing for more screening. But I did hear that piece where I thought, I heard that there were some particular portions where the development team and the planning board and the planning staff had not had a chance to discuss. But I think that it's been a thorough presentation. I don't think that there's anything that we have not discussed that can't be worked out. But I was concerned about the waivers that there's a recommendation for denial. And I don't know if there will be an opportunity for the architect, the development team, and the planning staff to get their heads together on before it goes to the City Commission. I, I think this is going to be an A-plus project for the city.
Thank you. Peter?
I'm a little sad, you know, that an unproven piece of art is going to be a deal-breaker. And I, and I think that the selling of this concept was a little weak, and that's what is causing all of the difficulties trying to visualize whether it's going to be an effective treatment to the building or not, and what the building will really look like after it's completed. I don't think the design of the site is very cohesive. It's disjointed. I think one firm designed the garage and another firm designed the office tower. And there's no relationship between the two whatsoever, either material, color, or even shape, you know, rounding off the corner, something to mimic the office tower. So I'm a little disappointed, frankly, in terms of the design of the garage.
Thank you. Andre?
I share the sentiments. I think that was great to hear from the public, the letters and emails. I think that was helpful. I think not all of them were valid. I think there were bits of, of each one, though, that definitely had some validity and weight that I think should be considered. I, I don't think that the, the parking garage is quite where it could be, and I, I just, it, it looks amazing, and there's no question about the architect, the visionary of Mr. Cohen, his, his level of excellence and his track record are tremendous. But I think that you have to look at that, and it's just, it's so big that it's going to be something that I think is, you know, we, we, yeah, we look at, we look to them as faith, and we look to the, the staff for, for faith that this is really what we want to see for, something that should stand the test of time. So, that's all I have to say.
John?
Well, we spent two hours talking about a super-important project, but it deserved all two hours. I want to celebrate this project. First of all, I know this conversation sounds kind of down, but like, getting a Caesar Pelli building in downtown St. Petersburg, not St. Pete, that's where I used to work, West Palm Beach is an awesome opportunity. I, I think we love the use. We've been screaming to get Class A office space. The fact that somebody's coming forward with a, a plan for a world-class, iconic, is iconic, building at the center point of our city is something to celebrate. I think it's a tremendous project. Some of my colleagues don't care for the site plan or the disjointedness of the two buildings. I actually don't mind that. I like the dynamic between the two, this little jewel box and this tower. I, there are plenty of projects where you have that sort of push and pull between two very different things. I think that the passeo ties things together. I think the site plan is really beautiful, so I, I celebrate the architecture, the use in the site plan. I typically tend to be more concerned about results than rules and understand that active uses and liner, liner, lining of a parking garage is a, is a safe place to go as a starting point. I personally am, look, it's an opportunity on the table whether the city wants to accept it or not accept it. I'm, I'm willing to ta, I personally am willing to take a leap of faith and to support the application along with all of the waivers that they've requested. But I want for the City Commission to know that in doing so, at least my vote is with a lot of reservation, and I would encourage the developer to do a way better sales job on that art. Not renderings taken from two blocks away as though buildings don't exist between it because we're going to look at it out our car window, right there, right up seven stories, not from like three blocks away in a downtown that doesn't have any buildings around it. I don't think that the drawings are transparent. I think they're misleading. I don't, we, you know, we want more information about the lighting and the paint and how it works and all this mechanical equipment that's going to be in it. And I think if we can get a truthful certainty about that our expectations will be realized as opposed to, you know, there's other projects where we like expected something and afterwards, it's like, oh, my God, we've got to change the code because that turned out so bad. Like, we don't want to be in that place, and I think that's the developer's burden. But we're a recommending body. I'm willing to give you that chance to do it before the City Commission. That's my vote. That's how I would go with it. But I want for that commission to know that it's with a lot of reservation, and I think you've got some sales work to do.
I'd like to begin my comments by first thanking Anna Maria Ponte. I think you do such excellent work. Whether I choose to follow you or not, I always feel I get great advice from you, and you give us the information we need to make an informed choice. So, so please take my comments in that context. I am really grateful for what you do. I have to tell you, when I first saw the material, I was somewhat skeptical about the parking garage, but I think Mr. Seymour convinced me. I mean, there's something awfully exciting, different, and I worry sometimes, you know, they say a zebra is an animal that's, was done by a committee. You know, whether we want a white horse or a black horse, let's not end up with a zebra. There's something about the way they've set this off. I think, Cat, you made the comment of really clean lines and that. I, I agree with you on that. And there's something both annoying and satisfying when a developer says they're just not prepared to compromise on something, where I think they have such passion, and they brought world-class architects on this. The fact they're fighting so strongly for the design tells me they believe in it. And I agree so much with some of the comments John made. I think there's real risk here, but there's also real rewards. You know, generations from now, maybe looking at that structure and saying, wow, you know, that's really special. That'll be on postcards in the future, you know, West Palm Beach. So like John, I'm, I'm prepared to support it as is. I have some of his exact same reservations that I know some of you all have expressed. I think some of the ideas of trying to bring some more interesting elements can maybe still be accommodated. I think we have a commitment from them to at least look into it. I hope their dialogue with the city will continue where there may be compromise, but for myself, I'm prepared to support the application as, as requested. Any other discussion? If not, we'll look for a motion.
I will move approval of Planning Board Case nine fifty with five Z's, subject, and all of the waivers that are requested, and subject to the conditions of the staff report.
So we have a motion. Have we a second on that motion?
Is that correct?
Okay.
Mm-hmm. I second.
Can we have a motion? We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, and I do agree with you, John, too. This was worth the two hours. This is an iconic building.
I want to, I want to thank you all, and I'm taking notes, and we will continue to work. I don't like the word sales pitch-
Broke with my friend Anna Maria, okay?
Well, I, I love talking to Anna Maria. She doesn't like talking to me, maybe, but I'm not going to use the word sales pitch, but, but better detail, a little more insight, a little more experiential to show some of those things.
Animation, animation would help.
I'm very animated. We don't know yet, Carla, but I'm very animated.
There's a lady from Java Work. She's giving you some good pointers, Brian. Pay attention.
We never stop working. Thank you very much.
Pay attention. All right, well, thank you. All right, now we move on. Planning Board Case number eighteen seventy-five and eighteen seventy-five A. And five minutes have been a lot of this application, so.
Good evening. Do we want to wait for?
Their sound still travels there. He'll still hear everything.
Sounds good.
We can't escape it back here. Even the restroom, it follows you.
Sounds good. So thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Good to see you this evening. I'm here to, for the second iconic project of the night.
So for the record, my name is Josh Nichols with Schmidt Nichols, and this is the Park Central RPD project. With me tonight, I do have Mr. Fish from Dock Street LLC. So if there's any questions relating to the details there, I'll be able to assist. And this does cover Case Number eighteen seventy-five and eighteen seventy-five A. A is the plat that goes along with it, so there's really not too much discussion on that from my presentation, but that will follow the site plan subdivision. Just to give you an idea where the project is, you're probably all familiar where Parker kind of splits off into Dock Street. This is- kind of splits off into Dock Street. This is where the yoga studio is currently. And actually, the yoga studio is a non-conforming commercial use on the property. So we're looking to remove that. Their lease is up pretty soon here, and it will be, I think, long awaited for residential change here. So kind of move forward. So our formal requests are for rezoning from SF-14 to the Residential Plan Development District. It's approximately 1.16 acres. We do have some right-of-way dedication for bike lanes and also eight waivers that we'll get into for the townhouse development. And then again, site plan approval for the townhomes and the associated site improvements. And then again, the companion application for the plat. So again, this just goes over the existing zoning of SF-14. So that will stay as our underlying, but we will have the RPD zoning as the overlay. And that does provide some flexibility because we're proposing townhomes. Townhomes are not specifically permitted in the SF-14. We were originally doing them as attached single-family homes, but the code had not been written yet to support that. So the best option we had moving forward was to go to the RPD. So we'll kind of get into that. So we are changing the zoning. Again, surrounding future land use is single-family to our southeast. And north is the park, is Howard Park. Here's the site plan. And really, I'm showing you the site plan, and I'll go into a color version of it. But this is really to go over the waivers that we're requesting. So again, the RPDs were really set up for more large lot suburban type development. This is obviously an infill site, eastward. And so we do have a number of those waivers that have to address those technicalities. So again, 10 acres is required, so we're asking for that reduction. Waiver two is for the lot size. Again, these are townhomes. So typically, the RPD is for a standard, single-family lot. So we do need that reduction. There is, again, for the lot with reduction there. Actually, it's for the overall lot and then obviously for the individual lots. Weaver number four is for the setback reduction. So we have a six-foot front setback, and that is measured to the stairs. So there's steps leading up to, up to the buildings. And that kind of mimics what you'll see in Manolio Park or Court. So you'll see that kind of gives it a more urbanized feel where you're walking up, you don't have the garages facing right out onto Dock Street. So that is a rear-loaded product. We'll see it better on the color site plan here. The side corner setback, we do have a reduction there, again, because of the townhome project. So all these are very technical items because of the purpose that it is a townhome lot. Again, zero setbacks because the townhouses are connected. And then again, more side corner and perimeter setback reduction. So all these, again, very technical and staff is in full support of all of these waivers. And again, we have a 24-foot drive aisle. We do have a small overhang there, but we still have plenty of room for maneuvering. And I'll talk more about the site layout on the prettier picture. So when we first approached the city for the project, there was a discussion of how are we going to access the site, right? Because the townhomes typically are, you know, smaller, narrow lots. And we do want to have the access without all of those trips and back-out movements coming straight onto Dock. So the thought was that we would maybe be able to use some of the canal there. You see at the top of the screen, there's a canal embankment. So we thought that would be great. We could utilize a portion of that and kind of stretch the lots back and utilize that area. So that was, we were going on that route and utilities kind of chopped us at the knees there and said, no, we can't really use that. So we had to back, dial things back and shift our drive aisle into our property, which was fine. We still were able to do the drive aisle and have the rear-loaded parking. In the front, you'll see the little, the stoop areas and then the landscaping that we've provided in there. And each lot, if you can see there, the little blue square, those are little plunge pools. So each lot, each unit has a plunge pool within their lot. And then obviously, the, on the right of the screen, there's a standard-sized pool because that is a larger lot, just the site lent itself to provide that. So we do have a right-in, right-out off of Parker. And then we have a right-in, right-out off of Flamingo. So there's two points of ingress and egress. We did also provide, so we meet all the parking requirements because we do have two car garages. And then we're also providing 10 on-street parking spaces that didn't exist before. So those will not only be useful for this development, but also the folks across the street to be able to utilize those on-street parking spaces. As you can see, to the right of our driveway off of Parker, there's a little, I don't know if the mouse will show here, but there's a little dried attention area, and that's fenced in and kind of a passive green space area. Here's a site rendering of the project, so you can see more modern take on the project. This is not in a historic district over here. And we do have a community support letter from Pineapple Park and also Flamingo Park. So I'd like to read one of those into the record. But, so that's a site rendering. So kind of a combination utilizing some of what you're seeing in the industrial chic area, grand view, kind of bringing some of that motif over. And again, so I just wanted to read one of the Pineapple Parks. So just an excerpt from it. It says, "The conceptual site plan design indicates the 14 attached single-family dwellings with on-street parking, along with the architectural plans, will seek to enhance the neighborhood and increase property values. We believe the Dock Street residential project will be a positive addition to the neighborhood that will add value while providing long-awaited new housing stock in Pineapple Park." And I think that was the big impetus for this, the whole project, was that there hasn't really been a lot of new housing stock in this vicinity. Park Slope was probably one of the last ones, and that's now fully sold out. So anyways, I think that's one of the big, the big positives here. And also, some of the traffic trips generated by the yoga and some of the code enforcement issues there go away. Again, just kind of going through some of these, we do meet the parking, talking about the zoning change, the densities. We do have a height exception per the code, so we're not asking for a waiver for that. But there is a 10% height exception that we do ask for there. And again, with that, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Let me start down here. Kat, any questions? Deborah? Peter?
No, no.
Andre? John? Okay. Thank you so much. Can we hear from Ms. Louise?
Good evening. Linda Louis, Senior Planner for the Record. So I'm just going to quickly summarize staff's position as well as recommendation on the project, starting with the waiver requests. So as Josh had mentioned, the project is seeking approval for eight waivers from the ZLDRs, or Zoning and Land Development Regulations, for the proposed project. As detailed in the staff report, staff is supporting all eight waiver requests. Each waiver was evaluated based on the applicant's justification, mitigation measures, and benefits to the overall design. Staff has found that the waiver requests are necessary to provide for an integrated project with the surrounding environment and promotes the concepts of new urbanism, which was important, given the site's proximity to a lot of amenities in the area. It also meets the intent of the ZLDRs and standards for qualitative site design. As for staff's recommendation, staff is recommending approval of both the rezoning and major subdivision with conditions. Staff has found the application to be consistent with the rezoning standards, site and qualitative design standards, and subdivision standards of our zoning code, which are provided in the staff report. The conditions of the approval, which the applicant has agreed on, are also provided in the staff report on Pages two and three. The conditions, in a nutshell, provide for additional traffic safety measures, as well as the provisions for the installation of landscaping and the ongoing maintenance, which staff believes is important for the quality of the design and benefit to the residents in the immediate area. And that concludes staff's presentation. If there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of staff? Let me start this. John, any questions? Andre? Peter?
No.
Anyone down here? All right. Thank you so much. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? And if not, let's bring it back to the board. Does anyone have any concern or objection about this?
No.
And if not, I'll look for a motion. When did you take it in?
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman, of Case Number 1875, inclusive of eight waivers and six conditions.
We have a motion. Have we a second?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
I'll move approval of Case Number 1875A.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those who favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Louise. All right. That then brings us to Planning Board Case Number 1060MM.
Hi. Good evening. Ellie Zacharitis, Dana Masco Backman, 14 Southeast Fourth Street in Boca Raton. Is my presentation on here yet?
Boca Raton.
Boca Raton. I'll be brief. I know it's been a long evening.
It's much appreciated.
Yes, my presentation is very brief. So this is the existing site. As you can see, it's Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard to the north and I-95 to the west. It's the Brandsmart entire site. And we have Best Buy as well to our north. Again, this is the existing site. There are two currently ingress/egress points to the east of the site. And there are two buildings that are currently existing that we are proposing to demolish, excuse me, to allow for the new BJ's. And this is the site. I'm sorry it's not oriented the same way, but you do have, to your north is on the left, and the Brandsmart building is in the center that will remain. And this is the proposed BJ's that will be further to the east. The future land use is commercial. It will remain commercial. The zoning designation is CPD and will remain CPD. The building area for Brandsmart, again, that's remaining, is approximately 117,000. And what we're proposing is the BJ is at 103,611 square feet. The uses we're proposing, obviously, we all know what a BJ's is. It has general retail uses. But we're also asking for the vehicle fuel sales, the tire service, and the liquor sales as well, which is quite typical for those types of uses. The combined site FAR is .29, which is significantly less than the 1.0. That's the max. And the overall parking that we're providing is 759. There is a parking waiver, which we're going to talk about very briefly. Okay. So here's just some of the things to orient you to the new site. So previously or currently, we have two ingress/egress sites. We are actually proposing three. Those are highlighted in green. Again, this is the BJ's. There will be a loading area to the north. And it's hard to see, but on the west side, the two green circles, that is both the tire sales and the liquor, the liquor sales as well. And then we have the gas sales, which is a little further to the south. And of course, we have a retention pond that's going to have walkways and sidewalks and the like. So what's before you this evening is a major plan development amendment. Again, the existing Brandsmart is a CPD, so we're into amendment. And we're also asking for five waivers separately that will come later, is a major subdivision plat. Okay. So I met with some of you. Thank you all for your time. There was some concern that was raised over our south elevation. This is what it looked like before. They're both the same elevation, just the bottom one just shows the Saw Palmetto that was proposed for the landscaping. We took your concerns very seriously and have revised them. Staff has just seen these. They're hot off the press. Literally, I got them this afternoon. Staff obviously has to analyze them. So we will be resubmitting those plans with the change to both the architecture and the landscaping. And we will have that done and reviewed prior to city commission. But just really quickly, we kind of tried to create some repetition here and bring that architecture further throughout that south elevation. We've actually clustered palms. There's a mixture between the Thatch palms and the Sable palms. And then we changed the Saw Palmetto to the Cocoa Plum shrubs. So that is what we're proposing for that south elevation. There was also some comments regarding, and I don't really know what they're called, but the lights that are on the wall. There is three lights on the wall, but only above the doors, which is required by code. There will also be ground posts as well that are being proposed and are part of your package, best seen in the photometric plan. Okay. So five waivers. I'm going to go through each of them very quickly. The first waiver has to do with our subdivision, which I noted is going to come back separately. As you all probably know, that you need to have an interior buffer between parcels of land. While we're asking for this subdivision, it's really more for financing purposes. It's not going to be a function on the site. It's almost like an invisible subdivision line. So the part, the two parcels after the subdivision will actually still be one development. They still have shared parking. They still share cross-access. They still share ingress and egress and the like. So we couldn't provide, along that red area, we couldn't provide that interior buffer requirement. So that is waiver number one. Waiver number two has to do with our access points. Apparently, the way the code is written, it's per development. And again, since this is one planned development, you're technically only supposed to have two ingress/egress points. But this is quite a large parcel of property, and we are asking for those three. And they're there. Okay. Our third one has to do with parking. As I'm sure you've heard many people before me come and tell you that the parking requirement is quite large here in the city. So we analyzed the parking requirements by code, and that's 883. Chris Hagan from Kimley Horn is here as well, and he did a parking study as what is on the ground and added to the proposed development what that would create. And he also looked to ITE. So ITE at the peak with a 10% added buffer, you're at 746. So that's about 100, almost 140 less parking than code requires. We're proposing a little bit more than that 746 and proposing 759. We're also asking for additional signage. As I noted before, we have the tire sales. We have the liquor stores. We have other uses that we want people to be able to easily see and access. So we're asking for six total in lieu of the three that code allows. And I think this is our last one. So this has to do with our north buffer to our property to the north. So there is a utility line there. So while we meet the code-required amount of trees, this little section in yellow, we just couldn't put trees there. So they're spaced out a little bit further in that area. But again, we're providing the code-required amount of trees. That was all my waivers. And then just going through really quickly, I'm not going to read all this, but we obviously have been working very closely with staff, and Eric Schneider has done an excellent job, and I thank him, going through the criteria and the standards. And obviously, we believe we meet them. Your staff believes we meet them as well. And that's it. Was I quick?
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? John, let me start with you. Any more questions?
Well, I want to thank you for all the great changes that you made to the plan. I think it was important for that driveway to not be so industrial. And one of the things I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask you was, is your client amenable, I know you kind of talked about lighting, but we had discussed about some pedestrian-level lighting along that sidewalk, not just the wall packs on the building. Is your client amenable to making sure that the site plan has those pedestrian-level lights along that sidewalk on that elevation?
Yes. Well, yes, absolutely. So I actually believed, and it was my fault, Mr. Hickson Bond, I thought those were just on the wall. The ones on the wall are just for, above the door that code requires. We already are proposing ones on the sidewalk as well.
Okay.
Yes. But thank you for your requested changes because I do think it improves, it proves that drive aisle.
All right. Thank you. Andre, any questions?
No comments. Looks good.
Peter?
No.
Any questions down here?
Actually, I do. I live in that area, general area. So I have a couple of questions. So first of all, the northernmost ingress/egress, is that off of Palm Beach Lakes?
It's Executive Drive.
So they're, so they're actually going to be the three because I'm very familiar with that area because I go to Brandsmart all the time. So, and I know the building you're going to demolish. So, so I'm familiar And I know the building you're going to demolish. So, so I'm familiar with the two that exist right now. So I'm just trying to see, you're going to have to create another for that northernmost, or is there one that's already existing there?
So there are two. Let me go back to the aerial. Sorry. So there are, oh, that's still, okay, so there are two, and we are creating one here.
Oh, I see. Okay, so you are going to create a new one. Okay, that's fine. And then my second question is regarding, you know, traffic. Executive Center Drive is essentially a two-lane highway, residential on one side, the hotel and, and business, you know, area, of course, on the other. And it's already, and it's also a cut-through. A lot of people cut-through from Palm Beach Lakes to get to Congress. I mean, I am a little concerned with the BJ's there. The, you know, the traffic, the potential increase in traffic on, on that street, and particularly because you have a lot of children, you know, who live in that area as well. What were the discussions, oh, okay, regarding?
I see my partner in crime.
Right, specifically Executive Center Drive and the traffic.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Chris Hagan. I'm with Kimley Horn Associates, and I was sworn in at the beginning of the hearing tonight. Address is 1920 Wakava Way here in West Palm Beach. We went through a process of review, both at Palm Beach County and city staff, where we evaluated the, the traffic impacts that are resulting from, from adding the, this, this facility. There are a couple improvements that are, and I don't know if we have a, a good, I can go to a slide here that might show. There are a couple of improvements that are occurring on Executive Center Drive that will help add especially some of the, the traffic that's going to be turning into and out of the site. The, in the southbound direction, I don't, I don't know if it was really fully highlighted, but the, the driveway, there are two driveways today, but this, the one that now becomes the middle driveway, that's the north driveway today, is actually sliding a little further south. And with it, the, the right-turn deceleration lane that turns into the site will be extended further south, too. So when you're leaving Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, there are actually two lanes heading south, and one of them becomes a right-turn lane into the site. So that, that capacity will be there, and that's where most of the traffic coming in, both for Brandsmart and BJ's, will be turning in. So after that point, there's really very little traffic related to the site that would be continuing on. You would still have some that's cutting over to Congress Avenue that's, that's continuing on that way, but we have the capacity to handle most of the site traffic with that exclusive right-turn lane that's going to, that's going to drop here. I'm highlighting with the, the cursor. The other effect of moving this driveway to the south is that it allows us to extend the northbound left-turn lane that goes on, on Executive Center Drive that, that turns onto Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard even further to the south. One thing that came out in the review and discussions with the, the city staff as well, too, though, is that from a capacity standpoint at that intersection, the, the left-turn lane, the left-turn queue, the line of cars does tend to get pretty long at times. And so what we've, what we are evaluating and have agreed to do is that if we can get the laneage changed, so we could have dual left-turn lanes at that intersection while using the existing signal structure that's there, the, the four concrete poles there and the span wire, then, then we've agreed to do that as a condition of approval, and that will help add capacity for the, the left-turn lanes, instead of just having one left-turn lane, there would be two left-turn lanes turning onto Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. So that, when you look at the road, that's the biggest capacity issue, is that northbound left turning onto Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard toward I-95.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, so right now, yes, you're right, that was a huge concern. That was going to be my next traffic question. It's that northbound direction and that left-hand turn. So right now, there are actually three lanes, you know, heading north. So you've left, you know, straight and essentially, you know, to the right, heading east. So what I think I'm hearing you say is that you could, you would take that middle lane, that go straight into the outlet mall and also make that an opportunity to turn left or go straight? Is that, is that what I think I'm hearing you say?
All right, for the record, Eric Snyder, I'm going to jump in here because I did a little slide for this.
Okay.
So in the aerial that you see, as Ms. Bryant said, there's, right now, you have one left-turn lane. What, and then, as Mr. Hagan said, that would extend the queue that goes back in one lane. And as you can look in the aerial, if you see, there's like the one single dark car, that's a straight lane through to the outlets. And then the lane that has the two cars, one of them being red, is a dedicated right-turn lane. So our traffic engineer had looked at this and suggested that the middle lane gets turned into another left-turn lane, and then that right-turn lane, or the last turn, the last lane there is both a straight-through and a right, because the volume of traffic is lower. This then, you know, the scale's a little off on those arrows, but what Mr. Hagan was saying is then you take all that traffic that was pulling back, and you can put it into two lanes in one cycle of light. Those cars could flush through. The challenge with this is, and I'm sure Mr. Hagan can explain it a lot better than I can, is the little string lights that hold over the intersection, there's something having to do with replacing those, and that's the county controls it because of Palm Beach Lakes. And even though this was their condition, to look at the stacking and the turning lady in their traffic letter, the applicant is working with the county to get those, those lights and those poles to make sure that the right lights, you know, that show left and right and straight and everything else can work. And Mr. Hagan can just explain that better than I can. So I just wanted to give you this, to give a little better visualization.
Okay, yeah, that, that's helpful. So that's really my, my only concern, you know, with this particular project, is that, that backup, you know, heading north on that street. But so as long as you are all in discussion with the appropriate personnel, and of course, with the county to change the, the traffic lights.
Yeah, ultimately, it'll come down to the, the review at the county with the, the structural support, the structural analysis of the signal that's, that's there. But because this would require adjusting and hanging different signal heads on that span wire across. But, but that is the condition, that if, if we can get that permitted through the county using that existing structure, then we can change it to have two left-turn lanes, and that would significantly add capacity for the left-turn movement. And when you look at the volumes, the, the left-turn movement, and you experience it by driving through there all the time, is significantly higher than, than the through and right turns combined, added together.
Yeah, I cut through there all the time, too. I probably shouldn't, but I do. All right, thank you for that.
Thanks.
Thank you so much. Any other questions of the applicant? And if not, we thank you, and we'll ask Mr. Snyder to step forward.
Okay, once again, Eric Snyder for the record. So the applicant went through a thorough presentation. Staff just wants to go over, we are recommending approval of the five waivers, and you can find the backup on pages eight and nine in the staff report. We're also asking, we're also recommending approval with the conditions that are listed on pages two through four of the staff report, with one change, and with a kind of a cut-and-paste error. You'll see that on the next presentation, why, where that kind of cut-and-paste came from, that it's not seating shall be designed. It should be the improvements shall be designed to comply with Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design Standards. And really what those are is, the applicant touched upon what is in the case, so let me get this here. So this is in front, and this is the, the one that's directly in front of Brandsmart. In order to shield the back of Brandsmart, and then kind of, and then also have the drainage and the detention, they created bioswales. This is work between staff and the applicant. We appreciate the applicant working with us on, on getting this. That, the green of the trees and the landscape that are being put in to screen the back of the Brandsmart building. The two little brown squares are the overlooks that are mentioned, and there are some paths you can barely see in them, kind of see them going through the landscape there. They will have some lighting on them as well. And they have just, that's what the condition was, is have a little added visual interest there for any of the residents in the area that, that are going through and walking to the site, that they can have this feel. Kind of also to help slow down, you were talking about executive, or West Executive Center. You see the on-street parking in front. This also, that helps slow traffic through there. The additional landscaping, the additional visual interest, and having people there will naturally slow traffic. So I just wanted to point that out, and so as far as the condition modification that we are asking you then to make change or have in the recommendations opposed to what was in the staff report. And that's all for staff. Do you have any questions?
Any questions of staff? And if not, we thank you. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Come forward, sir. We'll need a card from you later, but come forward, please. And Hope, can you be sure to get him a card? We need the card later for the record, but please come forward. State your name for the record and let us know your comments.
My name is Larry Sinowitz. I'm from Brandsmart.
Okay.
And I guess my really, I just have one question. What are those little brown things?
They are overlooks to, for people to walk and look into the retention area. The bioswale that has, it's not just sod in there. It's not just behiya sod. It's got different plantings to create visual interest in the area.
So it's just plants?
It's plants, yes. There's nothing.
It's not benches or seats or anything else?
There's no seats in the bioswale, no.
Okay. Answered my question. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. You kindly filled out the card we needed for the record. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? And if not, we'll bring it back to the board. Any, any issues or concerns of this board for the application? Is there any controversy? Anyone have a concern?
Because you're a new member, you have the opportunity to ask for Costco instead of BJ's.
If not, we'll look for a motion.
I'll go ahead. I'll go ahead and make the motion. Recommending approval of Case Number 1060MM, along with the eight waivers that are requested.
And I'll second.
We have a motion.
Let me go ahead and finish.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
We have an anticipatory second, but why don't you finish your motion?
I wanted to include the amendment, the revision recommended by staff.
There's five waivers, excuse me, five waivers?
Oh, five waivers.
Yes.
And this revision to staff.
Yeah, conditions also?
Yeah, just this condition with the one change.
The conditions with the one change, and that the plans will be revised to reflect the architectural elevations and landscaping that were presented to the board this evening.
And now I'll second.
I, I like the attitude, though. Just moving it along. Excellent. So we have a motion, we have a second. I need further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you. So just two more cases, guys. Hopefully, they'll go quickly. Next is Case Number 1060NN. By the way, I thought those improvements were huge. John, were you the one who had suggested that to them in a meeting?
I granted myself a waiver from ex parte to have a conversation.
Well, this is the benefits of the ex parte communication, because that was a huge improvement. Thank you. And speaking of improvements, we're going to have Mr. Chigas. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Board Member Bryant, this one's for you. Bryant Chigas, I Plan and Design, here requesting a major plan development amendment and site plan approval, Case Number 1060NN. I'm here on behalf of my, my clients, Mr. Jack Coney and Mr. Brandon Andrews, the owners of Vibe Investment LLC, and our entire development team, which are local professionals who have helped get this application to, to you all this evening. Specifically, major plan development amendment, inside plan approval for a new express service car wash use. We have no waivers. We have no variances, and we have no deviations from the zoning land development regulations. So this is going to be very quick.
No waivers, I think.
No waivers. A little bit of history. We are a portion of Parcel Three of the Palm Beach Lakes Inn and Golf Course Commercial Plan Development, which was approved by West Palm Beach County Commission, I'm sorry, West Palm Beach City Commission, on May 3rd, 1993, by way of ordinance number 2622-93. What that ordinance did was basically say what can and can't be developed on Parcel Three, that original seven-acre parcel. Part of that was the hotel, the Best Western, that's on Palm Beach Lakes now, with the location and orientation of, of West Executive Center Drive, and a limitation on the number of hotel rooms and trips within the CPD, as well as the approval of the restaurant, which could have been either part of the hotel or standalone. And as we all know, that hotel became the standalone King Buffet Restaurant, which is what our subject site is. Since the restaurant closed down six, seven years ago, there have been no other applications on the site, and there have been no other uses proposed for this location. Where are we? We're approximately 200 feet south of Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard on the west side of West Executive Center Drive. 1.2 acres, and we're surrounded by the Best Western, the Best Buy, the Marathon Gas Station, and the future BJ's and Brandsmart sites. Our zoning is CPD. The parcels to the north and south of us are both CPD. The parcels to the east are CPD across West Executive Center Drive, as well as residential plan development. Malibu Bay Apartments are located catty-corner to us. And the parcel to the due west, the Best Buy site, is general commercial. Future land uses, all the same, all cardinal directions, commercial, as are we, with that catty-corner site being multifamily. As we plug ourselves in with this use, this is what we look like, and I'll give you a quick flyby around the site. What we've done is we've, we've pushed our building up to the street. We engage West Executive Center Drive. What we've done is all parking, there are, there is no parking between our building and the sidewalk. That sidewalk is going to become a between eight- and 10-foot-wide multipurpose pathway. And in the front of our building, we're going to incorporate a plaza area, a landscaped plaza area, with bollard lighting and seating and sort of activity area, which, which doesn't exist today. And we're sort of that lynchpin site that I'm going to speak a little more to, because we're going to be connecting a lot of dots within the, the overall CPD. Because we're pushed up to the street, that puts all of our activity, parking, pay stations, circulation, all that's behind the building and landscaping, not seen from West Executive Center Drive. Our main access comes from the north, we, from Executive Center Drive or directly from Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard, secondarily through the Marathon Gas Station site. There is no restriction from that. Upon development of the BJ site, we will have a secondary access point, which we have cross-access specified at our southwest corner. We worked very hard with the folks, the planners and the consultant on the BJ's team, to make sure we could put that in a logical location. So to Board Member Bryant's point, we're going to be providing a lot of cross-access. So you're going to see, which wasn't spoken to, but you're going to see a lot of people being able to, local people, knowing where to cross-through to get to various parcels in the site that isn't currently available. So eventually, you'll see people cutting through the sites, and that'll help alleviate a little bit of traffic on West Executive Center Drive. We're very proud that we have, are the lynchpin site for pedestrian access. That multipurpose, multimodal pathway along Executive Center Drive is extremely wide, but for the first time in this CPD's history, we're pulling the pedestrian access from our site over to the gas station, to Best Buy. It's the first time that pedestrian connectivity has really been sort of contemplated, and we seem to be the, that, that hole in the donut, filling in a lot of needs and, you know, satisfying a lot of good design considerations. That enhanced landscaping along West Executive Center Drive, combination of shade trees, native palms, native shade trees, again, with significant lighting, bollards, and, and street furniture for, for active use. Another significant part of the application was the onsite preservation and relocation of native palms and live oaks. We put it on our western drive. That's ultimately going to be the cross-connection drive. So we're putting all those large trees, native trees, there. It's going to be a well-landscaped and designed element for the passing public, as well as to, for, for our customers. We are a complimentary service-oriented use to the hundreds of thousands of square feet of retail that exists and will be, continue to be developed in and around us, as well as the other service provision uses, like the hotel across the road, or the restaurants around Palm Beach Lakes, as well as the fuel stations. There are no other express car washes within a mile and a half of our site, so we don't have any kind of clustering conditions bringing this use here. This, this elevation is just a quick sort of explanation of the architecture. It's an art deco vernacular. Lot of vertical and horizontal articulation with the slanting walls and with the scoring. and horizontal articulation with the slanting walls and with the scoring. But to do it justice, for some of the board members who've been here for a few months, this building may look familiar, and this slide is only for the architecture, it's not for the surroundings. This is the Art Deco style it'll be in, classic colors, the clean lines, and a lot of movement in, in the walls. This is facing West Executive Center Drive if you're coming from Palm Beach Lakes, and this is the same elevation if you're coming north towards Palm Beach Lakes. So very, very signature building for these folks, it'll be a standout building in this location. It's their second car wash of this type. Signage will comply with all of the elements of the, the ZLDRs, so we're not asking for any favors in signage, it's all allowed. One monument sign at the northwest corner to introduce people into the site, wall signage on the building, and then a lot of wayfinding signage within the site, to make sure both pedestrians, patrons coming to the site, as well as people crossing the site, know where to go. This site operates like a machine, and we need to make sure people are sent in the right direction, and a good wayfinding signage will allow us to do that. Your staff is recommend, is in agreement that we are in compliance with all of the major amendment standards of 9432A. I won't go through all of them, but essentially, our application meets all of those requirements, satisfies and/or exceeds them. Your staff is recommending approval of this application with 10 conditions of approval, and we're in agreement with all of those conditions of approval. We're seeking this board's recommendation of approval to carry on to City Commission. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you may.
Okay, thank you so much. Any questions of the applicant? Let me start down here. Anyone have any questions? No? How about over here?
I do have a question. Why do you need so much parking at a car wash?
So this is-
Like an excessive amount of asphalt.
This is an express car wash.
Okay.
So all of the parking that may be, all the parking that is going to be located right behind the building is actual parking. All the parking stalls that are away from it, to the west of it, those are vacuum stalls. So express car wash allows you to go through, and you can go in self-vacuum. Very important, and the number of pump, of self-vacuum stations is extremely important, especially into these days of COVID. A lot of service-oriented uses, like car washes, are seeing a high, high change in demand, that people don't want service people in their cars, they don't want to interact, they'd rather get their car washed, go and vacuum it themselves, and have no one basically interact with them. And that's this style of car wash.
Any other questions?
So, of course, I've got West Executive Center Drive questions. First of all, the ingress egress from Palm Beach Lakes, you know, right now, there's, behind the mobile station, there's, you know, bushes and things like that. So is that going to disappear, or how are you going to, to be able to cut through there?
That driveway is our driveway that we'll be utilizing to get to our access point on the north boundary. So we come in off Executive Center Drive, and it's a right-in to get into, into that driveway.
Right.
And the, the trees and shrubs that are there now will be enhanced.
Oh, I see.
On the gas station side, it stays the same way. On the restaurant side, where that restaurant, derelict restaurant is now, that'll all be fully enhanced, as will essentially that, that access to that point. So that's our, one of our main points to get, ways of getting to us.
Okay, I got it now. And then, what's the retail, the retail that you say you're, you're going to have there? I know there's restaurant, but what other?
We don't have retail, we're a service-oriented use that supports the retail. Don't need one more square foot of retail, there's a quarter million around us.
Okay, yeah, I thought I might have misheard that.
Complimentary use to that retail.
I see, okay. And I actually do want to applaud you, that, that is a nice store, that King Buffet, and it's, you know, lots of, you know, drugs and things like that. So I really am happy to hear that someone's finally cleaning up that area. So, thank you.
Okay, terrific. Any other questions?
How much for the car wash?
How much do you want it for?
All right. Any other questions of applicant? We hear from staff. Eric, why don't you come forward?
Hi, once again, for the record, Eric Snyder, Principal Planner. Really have nothing to follow up on. It was a thorough presentation. As Bryant said, the, it does meet the standards for an amendment. They agree with the conditions on there. Some of them are ones that go on with the case throughout the life of the, the project. And they're here really because they need to get this use put on the site. Commend them from, for meeting all of the code requirements. And Andres, you asked about the, the parking, the asphalt there, that is, the site exceeds the minimum code requirements for-
I was gonna say, is there a minimum vacuum stall requirement?
The architecture looked pretty good, too, didn't you think, you know, for a car wash? All right, anyone have any concerns about this? And if not, look for a motion.
Public?
Oh, forgive me. Anyone for the public wish to be heard on this? Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Bring it back for a motion. Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to pass Planning Board Case Number, number 1060NN, with all conditions, all 10 conditions.
Okay, we have a motion. And we a second?
Second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, a passage unanimously. Thank you. All right, our last case, thank you, and our very last case.
Hey, wait on the roll.
Which Alex has promised to keep, what, two minutes?
It'll be short.
Okay.
Good evening. For the record, Alex Hansen, Cities Comprehensive Planner with the City West Palm Beach. This is Palm Beach, sorry, Planning Board Case 1895, is the new property rights element. As a background, this summer, the Florida Legislature amended the Community Planning Act through House Bill 59, to require every city and county to include in its comprehensive plan a property rights element. House Bill 59 requires all cities and counties to adopt this new element by the earlier of the date of the adoption of the next proposed plan amendment, that is initiated after July 1, 2021, or the date of the next scheduled evaluation and appraisal of the comprehensive plan. Just for background, state requirements dictate that local governments shall determine at least every seven years through the evaluation and appraisal process whether there's a need to amend the comprehensive plan to reflect changes in the legislature, in the legislation. The City West Palm Beach completed its last evaluation and appraisal report for its comprehensive plan in 2016. So our next scheduled evaluation and appraisal would not happen until 2023. So our options, either to wait until 2023, when is the next evaluation and appraisal, or to adopt the, the new property rights element now. Because, again, waiting until 2023 is not a feasible option, in part because the city is in the process of making other revisions to the comprehensive plan that will be, going to be in front of this board in the next few months. So we are deciding to proceed now with the adoption of the new property rights element, instead of waiting, again, until the next evaluation and appraisal. The proposed amendment creates a new property rights element in the city's comprehensive plan. It contains language that is consistent with the statement of rights that was included as part of House Bill 59, and complies with the new requirements of the Florida statutes for the Community Planning Act. The new element includes one goal, two objectives, and some associated policies. The first objective, Objective 1.1, identifies specific property rights and states that the city will respect them. This objective means, meets the minimum statutory requirements of having a property rights element in the comprehensive plan, and complies with the statement of rights included in House Bill 59. There were four items that were included in the House bill, and it indicated that any new property rights element needed to include those four items or four statements. Each of the four policies that we include in this objective is consistent with, with this statement of rights. We also have an proposed Objective 1.2, and some associated policy that identifies the right of people to participate in decisions that affect their lives and property. And this objective indicates that the city's decision-making process needs to continue to be transparent, reliable, and predictable. Staff is recommending approval of Planning Board Case 1895, based on the findings that the data analysis presented in the report, is consistent with the newly adopted state legislation included in Chapter 163, and is also consistent with other elements of the comprehensive plan.
So in it, we're needing to do this to bring our city code into compliance with state law, is that-
This, the city's comprehensive plan in compliance with, with the new state law.
Okay.
And we do not believe that these new property right elements, or any of the policies that are included here, are going to be changing any of the city's practices. These, this, this new legislation really is already stating what is regular property law. So really, none of our practices are, are going to be changing, but we're doing this because we are required because of House Bill 59.
Understood. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I was reading it, and, and I don't mean to sound rude when I say this, it sounded so superfluous. I mean, I just don't understand why, I mean, I get that you have to pass it because of the House bill, but was there something additionally expected of, of the city, other than, because obviously, you guys already do these things?
I mean, not all cities are as observant of these rights as ours.
Yeah, honestly, I don't believe this is the best use of staff's time for us to be doing this, but we are required to create this new element. Every city is now, every city, every municipality is doing this. Nothing's changing. This is somebody in Tallahassee that wanted to score some political points, and they decided to pass this legislation, and now here we are, adopting a new property rights element.
So the whole privacy element, there's nothing more to that aspect of privacy. Oh, I feel like I've started something.
Rick Green Development Services Director. I just wanted to mention, I was gonna whisper in Alex's ear, but I'll say it, what this, what the requirement that the state just passed also limits us from moving forward with any land use plan change until we adopt this, this element. So we were kind of hamstrung. If we don't adopt this element, then we can't bring you a plan, a change, a land use plan change, let's say, at the next planning board meeting. So we're kind of in a crunch. But Alex is right, I think.
So it's not changing your, your, after adopting this, there's nothing that's going to be changing in your processes?
There's not going to be any changes in our processes, in our practices. This changes nothing besides the fact that now there's an additional element in the comprehensive plan.
So I'm sure you're really happy that you were here for a night that we had a three-hour meeting, still not starting on our agenda.
Well, he knows it'll go faster this way, so in that way, he is happy. Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just, the, this particular element, the American Planning Association was against it, the Thousand Friends of Florida was against it, it was really not necessary with the Burt Harris Act. It was just, it's just another effort to try to diminish local home rule. And I'm glad to see that it's absolutely the bare minimum that we need, because we don't need anything more that allows folks to challenge actions, actions of the city to plot its own destiny.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, I mean, that's just my opinion.
With that enthusiastic endorsement, I'm looking for a motion.
I will move approval of our new property rights element page, which is-
Important document.
Case 1895.
Okay, we have a motion, have we a second? I'm looking for a second.
You did.
Second.
I'm so sorry. Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, a passage unanimously. Stay seated just one moment. This moves, our agenda then goes code revision cases, of which there are none. We move to other business, unfinished business, new business. Does anyone have anything?
No.
If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
Yay.